So welcome to the special board of commissioners meeting for Monday, November 18th. Will you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone and thank you all for being with us this evening. We will start off with public participation. Is there anyone who'd like to make some comments?
Um, is this being taped?
It is being taped.
Okay. Um, can somebody just, not on my time, tell me why we're not downstairs and being live filmed? Because I think the budget is the most important part of your meetings during the year and that you get the most watches. People really do, I know, they watch all of it because it gets really down in their weeds, but they like to know where their dollars are being spent. Um, it's your primary, you know, function and to not have it live, then people, their schedules are messed up because they can see it at night more than they forget to watch it, you know, on revisionist history, so.
Well, this will be taped and broadcast several times.
Right, but they're used to watching it like a certain time of the month and the other ones are, which aren't about the budget, which is your most important function.
So this is a special meeting, Leslie. Usually we don't meet on this night anyway.
Right, I know that. I'm just saying I think that the budget meetings should be...
Quite well taken, thank you.
Thank you, and they used to be. Okay. Leslie Morgan from Ward 1 to, or Ward 1, Section 2. I, um, I've been following somewhat the budget meetings for 2020 and I'm getting heartburn as you can imagine since I truly believe that a township like Radnor never really needs to increase taxes and can live within their, their means. They're a very wealthy township. There's a lot of revenue, there's a lot of dynamism in the numbers and there's always a way to reallocate capital that can, you know, that can produce the same type of product. Last year, we not only raised taxes, we increased debt and it looks like we're sort of gunning that again and I just have to shake my head. I haven't heard one commissioner, except maybe Commissioner Farthing came up with a great idea, thank you. And I know that Commissioner Booker has some ideas too, that have come up with ideas to maybe solve problems without raising debt or taxes. And so I came up with a few. You can take them or leave them. One that I'm going through right now personally, and I don't, is it taped? Like, how do I show my boards?
Here. Cameras in the back.
Okay. I don't know how to do this, but, um, I'm doing an addition and in, it's, it's quite a substantial but small addition on a hundred-year-old house for its birthday next year. It'll be 12020. And along the way, I knew that we would have to do stormwater because stupidly I bought in perkable ground and high ground. Now, so on Farm and Windsor Road, there are two projects going on, mine and another one. And we both had to spend enormous money for the stormwater code, which we're happy to do, but what I'm not happy to do is have an unlevel playing field. And I know that you know about this and it still hasn't been fixed. So, in 1-2, we're pretty high ground and we perk, but we pay more for our houses on a square footage basis a lot because of that. I didn't want to live in a floodplain, sorry, I didn't. So I paid more to live where I'm living. So I'm, I'm doing this addition and the number came in of 15,000 for 440 square feet of new addition. I've just spent 15,000 on a stormwater because I perk. But down below me and through the trussel, in 1-1, in floodplain. It's floodplain, they all know, most of them know, 90% of them know. They get to add the same thing, the same project and get pubkiss, okay? So I don't think that's fair, but I came up with a solution because you know me, I don't bitch unless I have a solution. Much like the open space, especially in small developments where the developer couldn't come up with the open space or the amount of green space, they have to give a check back to Radnor Township. And I think it's very easy to measure the differential. And I don't know why, when I drive down those roads, I see additions and they're not giving checks back to the stormwater fi, stormwater fund, okay? So they could give 15,000 as part of their budget, 15,000 as part of my budget. It's more for the man who looks over Wawang. He's spending like 25,000 on his thing, okay? So I think that that's an easy, low-hanging fruit. You've got 10 houses a year probably in, in floodplains. That'll do a moratorium on all development in floodplains. It's either or, but you can't treat us unfairly. That's just not right. And people in your township, they do want basic fairness and this is unfair, okay? You're going to raise taxes, I'm paying into the fund two different ways this year and it's just not fair. So get the differential, it's very easy to define, and you'd probably get 150,000 directly to the township per year. Maybe some years more, maybe some years less, okay? There's my easy one, okay? Another one that I've already talked about through the last few years is our favorite piece of ground, 145 King of Prussia Road, the most valuable commercial piece in Radnor Township. It is on record. Before this board, it'll be on record after this board. It is the most valuable tax parcel in Radnor Township. And if you don't not believe that, or however I would say it because that doesn't sound right, but if you believe that, then where is our team? You're talking about a team, the green team for 2050. Where's our team getting together so that we have a fair fight with University of Pennsylvania? Come on, guys. This is the third time I've talked about it. Where's our team?
Leslie, one minute.
Okay. Well, so we have one minute. So where's our team? That I want to know tonight, I need somebody to talk to. Where's our team of a lawyer so that we are not taken advantage of? They're really smart and they're really big and they just gave a $250,000 check, which I loved. I love that, okay? But I don't want it to look like quid pro quo, which we've all had to learn about this year. Okay, so. And the other thing that I had on my mind quickly to wrap up in 30 seconds, I, somebody said eight police and he started, I've talked to some of the policemen, I love Radnor Police, this is not, but how about before we hire a new policeman, since we hired them last year and through the years and I think, you know, why don't we do what's called a public service campaign with a professional PR thing and tell the people of Radnor Township what they're not supposed to call about, like hair dryers and light bulbs and promposals and cats, okay? And I totally agree on Villanova. You've got to go to the public because the public, even if you took a referendum vote, they would ask you to go to Villanova because they can't be getting 89 visits from police or fire or however it's, and get off scot-free. There's so many ways to hold them accountable and you need to go to the public. You need to go to the people on this. You need to be vocal. It's just not fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Anyone else who'd like to speak this evening?
Sarah Pillington, 29 Garrett Avenue, 38-year resident in Radnor Township and I'm wearing my green team hat tonight. Last week I spoke because I have heard that some commissioners think that we can develop a plan to go 100% renewable by 2030 and transportation by 2050, that we can do it ourselves. We can't. They have analytical skills, they have access to information. I was just at them ready for 100 meetings and they're talking about some of the things if you don't have a professional. It can take you 10 years to work through the mire of energy companies and who owns it and who are the investors. So I want to remind you that this is an opportunity for Radnor Township to join the other 23 townships in southeast Pennsylvania to move ahead. And I would ask you, if Radnor doesn't do it and 23 other municipalities move ahead, what kind of a position puts Radnor in? But something else that I want to speak to, and I only learned about this today, I told Lisa. Today I learned that the Earth Action Leadership Council at Radnor High School began a program three years ago and they have 100 members. At their own expense, two of them went to Hartford, Connecticut for the weekend to work with Ready for 100 team to learn more because they're the ones who are going to be affected either positively by what we do or negatively by what we don't do in the next 10 years. I also want to speak to community, to the sense of community. There are a lot of people in Radnor Township who are doing everything they can. They're carrying their bag to the store, they're monitoring their recycling, they're trying to diminish their trash, they're turning off the lights when they go out of the room, they're turning down the heat a little bit, but they're doing it as individuals. It's not hard, but it is hard if you think you're doing it alone. One of the reasons we want the planners is to pull all the disparate parts together so we build community and we can move forward together. So I ask you again to fund it. Bill, put the figure in of $40,000. It's actually not $40,000. It's not to exceed $38,780. So I think for the betterment of the township, I'd like to ask you to be, not be penny wise and thoughtful.
Thank you, Sarah. Somebody else who'd like to speak tonight? Please.
So my name is Dan Agolia. I'm a resident of Askin Road right around the corner. Thank you for letting me speak for a couple minutes. I am here on behalf of the, my fellow residents and homeowners. We even embarked on a two-year kind of inquiry as to the logistics of turning our road back over to the township. And the reason why we're doing this is certainly not because we don't have anything else to do, but we've run into significant deterioration in the road. Really, really, the stormwater has, like many other roads in this town, has gone really downhill, for lack of a better term, since it legitimately is going downhill. But the road is, it's deteriorated so bad and I live on the top of it and whereas there's a bunch of little kids running down there, it's never maintained at all. It's uneven from top to bottom. And quite frankly, you know, as a private road, we are just looking for a little bit of help on the township and if it turns, if it turns out that turning it back over to the town does that, we would be all for it. And we've met with Steve Narchini, we've met with Luke Clark in a bunch of different meetings in the past couple of years and we'd really like to explore that. So I'm here on behalf to just introduce myself and two of my other residents on saying that this is a very high priority. We've had complete 100% support. We have petitions, meetings the past couple of years and I, as a private road, we are fully invested in turning it over to the township if we can get improvement on that. So it's probably a little bit more self-serving than like the prior two speakers, but it's something that nonetheless we've worked on for two years now. So we've come this far and I hope it would be considered in the 2020 budget.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jill Feniger, Ward 3-1, Askin Road residence, and I absolutely support and request your taking back our road, if you could please. And I'd like to read just a brief statement from a fellow neighbor who couldn't be here. Due to conflicting schedules, we, the Lowe family on Askin Road, are unable to attend to make a comment tonight. We have asked our neighbor to do so on our behalf. We would like to voice our support for turning back Askin Road to Radnor Township and we hope the Township Board of Commissioners will approve this project.
Hi, I'm Chip Addis, also 15-year resident of Askin Road. And over the past 15 years, I have seen a deterioration of not only the road, but the properties that surround the road because of the volume of water that comes from above and through that neighborhood is, I could show you some videotape of the volume of water. So anything that the township could do to help us and utilize Askin Road as a way to manage this stormwater, I would certainly be in favor of. So it's, it's really gotten very, very bad over the years. Also, one other little request as a resident of this township is please allocate some money to fix the roads in the township.
Thank you.
I know that might require increasing our taxes a little bit or that area of the budget a little bit, but the condition of the roads are just deplorable. So please, anything you can do to help would be very much appreciated.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
On the same topic, I'll...
Please, come on.
My name's David Gordon. I'm a resident of actually Brookside Avenue, but my house is on the corner of Askin Road, so I'm in the same group with, with Dan, Chip and Jill. I would echo their comments in terms of just providing a little bit of color. Chip talked about the stormwater. That intersection of Brookside and Askin floods, I would say, three, four, five times a year. There's a manhole cover that literally gets blown off and becomes a road hazard, blown off by water basically coming up from the, the stormwater, knocking it off and out of place. You can see water sort of pouring out the top during bad storm events and then people have to knock the manhole cover back into place so it doesn't take out the tires or whatnot. So it's, it's, it is a real problem and a real hazard and so, you know, as a resident of the township, as a resident of that neighborhood, I would greatly appreciate it if the, if the township could help address those issues and take control of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Anyone else? Whatever mine, silencing, because we're in such close quarters, silencing your phones, that would be great. Anyone else who would like to speak tonight? All right, well, thank you all very much for coming out, appreciate it. All right, with that, we'll turn it over to Mr. White and Mr. Zanich.
Thank you very much for meeting again. I want to talk with discussion just as a review of what we had gone through last time regarding the 2020 community group funding. Here is a graph of what is, was funded in 19, was proposed for 20. And wanted to get some input from the board if you are prepared to discuss what items or how you'd like to fund these groups at the system levels or are there some changes that may want to be made within the area? I know we talked about scheduling the special meetings for next year. And just again, just to point out to you, first, we asked the board meet probably January to set the goals and priorities for the organization for 2020. This way, should be able to follow along then once the budget's adopted for all of this year, which is what the board would like to see us accomplish. And again, as we spoke about, one of the items would be the stormwater projects list. Make that determination, which you have the staffing request presented to the board. That'd be something for discussion, further consideration. Next year, the development of the township-wide parks and facilities, making some perimeter plan, as well as the funding for capital, sanitary sewer system, the turnback of the by the way, trees, as well as the further discussion on dedicated millage for the library. And just next steps is what we talked again, tonight's meeting to determine the various villages and fees, the capital projects, if there were any that are sitting out there that the board would like to see us try to incorporate into 2020 budget. So that is the test for this evening. Hopefully, there'll be some agreement on that and then the following dates here of the process for intervention and then final adoption.
So to recap what, the recommendation that was made a week ago and how it relates to tonight and then building on the next steps is that the recommendation a week ago was to consider adopting a certain millage rate that would be specific to fire company funding. And hopefully tonight, we can get through that discussion and get direction. The ordinance that will be introduced next Monday night, we're putting that together now. So what, depending on what comes out of tonight's meeting is how we'll draft that ordinance. It'll be introduced on the 25th and adopted on the 9th. So maybe that's the best place to start because that might be the first domino. Once we get that pushed over and then we can get into the details that the manager alluded to earlier in the presentation with regard to the community organization funding, which can then, once we have those decisions made, then I think having a discussion on sewer rent and stormwater combined with any general capital projects will be a little bit, it'll be easier to have those discussions knowing those other pieces are put to bed or at least we have direction on those. So perhaps the millage is the best place to start. And what we had talked about last week was a, a millage of .3770 and that would be dedicated directly to funding the township's contribution to the fire companies. And based on some questions that came up after last Monday's meeting, just to be clear, from the board's perspective or the board's authority to decide how much you're willing to give to the fire companies, none of that changes. You can decide to, to fund at whatever level you feel is appropriate, whether that include the 250,000 additional that was requested by the Radnor Fire Company or not, or more or less. The, the decision to fund it with dedicated millage is, is somewhat separate. Or you don't lose, by having dedicated millage, you're not losing your ability to restrict or control the funding that's going to the fire companies. It's just a, a different mechanism. And as we talked about last Monday, what, what has happened over the years as we get into these budget discussions is with the volatility of the business taxes and the fact that it's just, it's unpredictable at best. When we get into these years where revenues aren't where they need to be to fund everything that's on the list, it's tough and, or things get squeezed out and usually it's the, the community organizations that are not part of the township that are coming and having to, to request that money. So this would separate that group for next year, separate fire out. They have their own dedicated millage, they wouldn't be subject to the volatility of business taxes anymore. It'd be something going forward that with real estate taxes, it would be a known number, it would be something that's predictable and, and Radnor very, very reliable. And then from there, the board can manage increases, decreases and fluctuations in what the fire companies need to operate based on just that piece of the millage. And so that's where the recommendation was coming from. And then from the township as a whole, it's, it's one less thing during budget time that is up for debate and consideration and one less thing tugging at the, the remaining revenue that we have available.
Well, how do we handle requests that exceed that fund?
Well, the, it would, the decision would be, from the board's perspective, the decision would be how much are we willing to fund the fire companies? And then once the board comes to an agreement on what that number is, then the millage is just a calculation.
But we're not going to change that every year, are we?
You don't, you certainly don't have to, no. It could be a fixed millage rate for a period of time.
Potentially it could though. If the requests come from the fire companies that they need additional funding with a specific item, it would be brought back to the board and you would then consider adjusting it a break.
Then I... Could we... Well, the, the thing about it is, you're not proposing to reduce the remaining taxes by that amount, you're, you're going to backfill that amount, right? So in other words, if we put, separate 3.37 mills for fire, we won't reduce the remaining budget by .37.
No, that is, that is correct. That's what's being...
So we're having an increase?
Okay, Leslie. I, how about if we will allow for public comment at the end of the commissioner discussion, okay?
As has been reported in all of these budget discussions, the revenues that the township has relied on to fund all of these organizations and township operations has declined and is not where it was two, three years ago. So we're in a situation where we have less resources and we can certainly continue to fund the fire company out of today's millage rate, then it becomes a discussion of what $1.2 million in other expenses that the township has, is the board wanting to cut.
Bill, so my concern here is if you have a dedicated millage, that has to be used for the fire, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if we can fluctuate that every year, now we're handcuffed to whatever that millage is, let's just say it's 1.2 million a year that we raise. So now we're handcuffed to give that to fire, which is fine, I get it and we should do that. But if we're going to potentially change it every year, then why not just increase taxes and that frees up the board of commissioners if there's a surplus or a shortfall, what to do with it. To me, it just doesn't, we're only, we're only hurting ourselves on this board because we're handcuffing ourselves with what we have to do with that money. Does that make sense?
It does. And just increasing the general millage would, would accomplish the same thing.
Then, then why, then why handcuff the board if we could just, if we're going to get to the same place, why make it more difficult for this board to function?
The idea being that it's, it's a, it's an obligation of the township that's not going away. It's something that township is, will always have to fund, so doing so, giving it specific millage to fund, it, yeah, it, it reduces the number of variables during budget season in terms of...
Sure. I'm not trying to be argumentative, but, but it's, I said, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but it just seems that there are other ways to, to get there. I don't want to...
Maybe one, one of the items is the, the costs are only going to continue to rise for fire. I think it lets the community know as well that these funds are going to the fire department. Because right now, I'm not sure how many people in the community know that we fund all these different groups, that we provide these funding sources. So the board can always reduce the number annually, you can come back and say we're not happy with what you're doing with it or how you're using it, so you can come back. If their reserves get higher, you can ask for a lot of, a lot more information and reports to you quarterly to say how we're doing with those funds. But it segments that away against the long-term. This is going to be a continual issue for the township of how we fund that really one of, one of the most important services. We can really fund that. And it gives them subsistence for planning purposes too as well.
And I, I've said in the past and I'm not again, to do this, you could cancel, not cancel it, but if you, we vote on ordinance to get this, we could also vote to repeal it, correct? With just one, one vote. So if it does look later down the road where you could, as Rich recommended at the last meeting, that you do a fee instead of a tax and do it based on square footage or this or that, you could repeal it and, and...
I thought we couldn't do a fee for this.
If it turns in the future that we can.
Yes.
And I, and I would like to...
If at some point in the future, the legislature gives us the authority to, or the ability to sign a fee for fire service, then, yeah. Just like anything else, you, you would have the ability to, to adjust and react accordingly. It's, it's on an, a year-by-year basis.
Well, again, there's no, it's not a matter of authorization. The, the issue was, our view is that there is sufficient nexus between the provision of services and the taxing authority of the township to have this be a fee. John was going to look at it. John said, "Maybe tenuous," but he didn't do the research, so we, we, we're not, it's not a matter of waiting for legislation. It's a matter of taking the position that we can do that. But I think the bigger issue is, one, this is a discussion tonight, so I, I, I'm concerned when you say finalized, do you, do you want us to do a vote tonight? Because I don't think that that was, what's in the thing. I think a vote will need to be a regular meeting.
No, we need direction so that we can finalize the ordinance that you will be considering next Monday night in your regular board meeting.
Right. So with respect to the .37, I would like to have some more clarity on exactly what the number is from prior budgets for the fire companies and what, if any, the increase for this 2020 year that's associated with your projected villages. And I think you've covered that, but I would like to get some more clarity on that, exactly what that is so we understand that. And then... And then I think I agree with Commissioner Farley that it is limiting. And once we set a millage for the fire company, it'd be very difficult to ever reduce it and to ever have flexibility with it. So first of all, what did we have in prior years and what are we putting in for this year?
So for 2019, I'm looking at these cells down here. For Radnor Fire Company operations, 543,000. For Radnor Fire Company capital, 200,000. Bryn Mawr Fire Company operations, 110. Bryn Mawr Fire Company capital, about 83,000. And then Brumall was at 10,000. For 2020, the numbers are on, in total, 1,214,000. That includes a 2.75 increase to the current Radnor Fire Company operational contribution plus the 250,000 that they requested for 2020. And then continuing to pay 200,000 for the capital. And then for Bryn Mawr, the same two and three-quarter percent increase on the operational contribution and continued funding of the 83,000 that rounded to the nearest 10th. But 83,090 dollars for their capital. And then the same with Brumall, just the two and three-quarter percent increase on the 10,000. So 10,280. So that's, that's where we're getting a total contribution from the township to the three different fire companies of 1,214,000 and change. And then based on the forecasted assessed value of the township for 2020, that would necessitate millage of .377 or .3762 to generate 1,214,000 to make these contributions. So in comparing 2019 to 2020, it's, it's some cost of living type increases of two and three-quarters on the current operating amounts and then adding the 250 that Radnor requested for 2020.
So what, why bother with the, with the small amounts for Brumall and for the Bryn Mawr Fire Company at the 2.75? It's really insignificant. And then what's the 250 going to go for again? Did, and I know Aiman's here, I know we talked about it, but where did that number come from and what's the round, why is it a round figure like that?
For career staff.
So what's, what's the breakdown on that 250? Why do we need 250?
I would prefer Aiman to answer that directly.
I mean, it's for career staff, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just stand up and please.
David, I know we've been talking about this for, I think since March. So the increase of last year's, these are all going back into the career staff, also called paid staff at Radnor. So it's our salaries, benefits, all associated with paid staff training, all in. So it gives us flexibility. We can do full-time hires with that. We can do just part-timers or we can do a mix of both full-time and part-time hires. Depending on, depending on, or with the staffing matrix that I talked about with having six people on during the day, four at night, Monday through Friday, four during the day, four at night, Saturday and Sunday.
So how does that calculate the 250,000 need?
Well, for a full-time basis, they want one full-time employee fully loaded is about 100,000. So it's going to give us two FTEs plus we use 50,000 towards employee towards part-time staffing if we just, if we, if we do it like that. We could decide we're just doing the one FTE, these 150 with part-timers only, so we're not paying any benefits.
So what, what do you really need, Aiman? Is this, is that a wish? Is that what you need?
That's what we need to accomplish the staffing model that I talked about and be able to pay for it. That's what we're going to need over the next couple of years to make it work.
But it sounds like that's a swag number. So you, you said, you gave us specific numbers, four people on the day, at night, on the weekends. So what is the delta between what you have right now and what it is to get to that number? And is it 250 or do you need just one FTE? What's that 50,000 fluff number?
What do we really call fluff? Because it comes down to what we're paying each individual person and where we're at with our payment rates with part-timers and our collective bargaining agreement that we have. That's a three-year agreement, so that changes and that scales years one, two, and three.
What do you need for year one? This is only one year.
This is, this is the number.
Well, it's, okay. You just said it's for one, two, and three.
Yes.
So presumably you're going to want more for next year and the year after.
Well, I think the biggest thing, and I've talked to Bill White about this, if you decide to do the fear the tax route and you're establishing a set number, if we're at the 250 and you believe from a planning perspective that's going to stay static, that we can maintain that at least through this year and next year without the need for an additional increase on the operating or on the capital side.
So you're suggesting that if, that the millage that we would generate, or the money that we would generate by raising the millage would sustain you for the next several years? Because one of the things I'm concerned about is we put this in 9%. You know, as Sean said, that does kind of handcuff us, you know, if, if there's more needed or we decide to change the model or something like that, you know, you feel like this would sustain you?
I can talk about the next two years. I mean, one thing I've talked to Bill and Bob about, me standing here telling you what's going to happen year, past year three and four and five, that number isn't going to do it. I can just tell you that right now. This goes back to my idea of having a fire EMS commission established that's monitoring these funds. A lot of the questions that Commissioner Booker has, these things were being analyzed. So there's at least four public meetings during the year. And we're caught up on kind of what we're discussing as far as these adjustments that need to happen or don't happen. So that's, that's the best I can tell you. But I know at least for the next two years, that's the amount that's established here versus things we're doing internally that contain costs that we can make that work. Past that, I think I, I, you know, I'm going to say, I'm guessing, but I don't think it'd be appropriate for me to speak here for two years at this point. Because again, we're trying to get more volunteers in the building. We have a big influx of volunteers that are very active. That changes the map as well. I, I can't, you know, I'm hoping that the efforts and things I talked about in the last meeting, that those are fruitful. That changes some of the discussion that we're having here, especially pertaining to meeting, paid firefighters to respond to calls.
If we start paying people, chances are it's going to go the other way. Everyone's going to want to get paid, right? You're going to get less, you're going to get less volunteers.
And less contributions up there.
We've, we've had paid staff for decades at this point. We're not alone in that. Our neighbors in Berwind, Paoli, Norbert, as you know, they're EMS only, but they're a combination unit. They have paid staff and volunteers. You very up a fair point. But I, you know, 20-plus years into this at this point, I obviously work full-time at Radnor, but I still love to volunteer in my hometown in Berwind. Again, that's, I can't sit here, Oshie can tell you that we're going to get 15 or 20 active, you know, people at the fire company that are going to enable us to deliver a standard of cover to the community that's acceptable, that I can say and say, look, we don't even get to add any additional staff on. But I, I mean, I feel comfortable, our president's here this evening, Chief Aguirre couldn't attend because he's a drill tonight. At least now with that number of the next two-year period, we're solid. And again, I think continuing that discussion as we talk to some other issues here is critical because this is big money. And it's matters that cows have talked about, that need is unfortunately not going to go away.
So what we're chasing in this, with this addition though, is the response time, right? So the issue right now is, is that your concern is we're not meeting your standard response time because we don't have the people, so it's taking us more time to get to emergencies.
Correct.
Is that for fires or for ambulance or for both?
Well, okay, this is two-part. So it's more on the fire side because on the fire side, we're looking at a four-man or four, yeah, I shouldn't say man, four-person, per to respond to a call. On the MS side requires two personnel. So as far as just staffing numbers, staffing animals, it's easier than a piece of fire apparatus. So as you perfectly pointed out, the response times one element, it takes you to have enough people and once you get there, you can start to deal with the problem. That's number one. The second thing, going back to the Penn Medicine topic that was talked about, this is important. So we're going to have the ability at the facility to have space dedicated for us that we will have a, the ability to deploy an ambulance there during certain hours during the day, typically during peak hours, Monday through Friday, because we have the people on the EMS side. It's really the response time issue. So having a unit further east in the township will help serve us eastern of the township, you know, getting down to Garrett Hill faster, shooting down 320, getting to the top end of Radnor Township. So you kind of got two different things working. On the MS side, we're a little more solid because again, the reason we have paid staff for anomalies is for the animals. The demand is higher in the EMS side. We're doing 22, 2300 ambulance calls. That's primarily where the paid staff are focused. But what we're seeing with the volunteers being static, we're declining, the real response rates not being the greatest during the days because those folks are working, we're pulling them away from the animals to get on the fire truck. So with the addition of the additional paid staff, making sure we have the correct numbers there at the moment, based on what our volunteer response rates are, that's kind of what we need to make things work and address the issue you talked about, to make sure we're hitting the response time and having adequate personnel to get there and deal with the problem.
The two FTEs would be predominantly fire or predominantly ambulance or one and one?
They will, they will be cross-trained firefighter, EMT, or firefighter medic. We try not to hire sole providers, so to speak. We're trying to get more bang for our buck. Actually, we're going to put that money out to get that person the door. We're going to have flexibility with them to bounce them around as needed. They might be doing, just running fire calls one day, the next day or the next two or three days, you'd predominantly be on the ambulance. So from a, you know, cost, be cost-effective and utilize the dollars wisely, try to get cross-trained personnel to refer to them in those positions, both part and full-time.
Right. So because of that, there's two FTEs, because there's more ambulance calls, they would be generally doing more ambulance work because there's just more calls that they're all time, but there'd be more ambulance. Why not just go with the two FTEs and forget about those, the part-timers? Could you live with that? So make it 200,000 instead of 250? You're, you're going to reevaluate it next year anyway, you said, and the following year.
I mean, what I can do, what I can do this week, I go through the numbers I can get with Bill and go through a couple scenarios with, with the numbers, see where 200,000 gets us. And then I can do it that way.
Well, basically it would be the two FTEs you're talking about. And what kind of response time is that going to get us though? So what, what, how, how much are you going to, what's our response on now and how much are we going to reduce that? What's the actual time? And what's the average you're looking for and what do we, what's, what's the time we're supposed to get?
Well, typically for an advanced life support emergency, so you have difficulty breathing, cardiac arrest, and more serious medical incidents, you want to get an ambulance or dispatched on location within six minutes.
Right, within six minutes.
Where your basic life support calls, your basic falls, you break an arm, something minor, you're looking at the 10-minute standard or better.
And right now, we're not getting the six and the 10-minute consistently?
No.
And so the, the two FTEs will get us the six and 10-minute on those calls?
Well, it's a combination with redeployment of one of the ambulance during peak hours when our volume is highest. Do you remember what I showed you those charts during time of day?
When the volume's highest, you know, that Penn site is not going to be a good site because it's going to be a lot of traffic to get out of that building.
Way up the siren.
And Penn, and Penn, with, if the road's totally jammed beside the side, the siren only does so much.
Right down the third.
Penn, Penn was supposed to also have their own fire, their, their own ambulance there.
Well, Penn, Penn does have their own ambulance they use for, what's referred to as inter-facility transfers. They're moving a, you know, patient for a certain procedure from, it could be from Penn Madison now to Penn of Philadelphia or vice versa.
So Penn was not planning on doing emergency calls at all?
They'll be doing, they'll be doing emergency transports inter-facility. That's something we don't get involved in. That's where you're going hospital, hospital, or from, it could be doctor's office to a hospital.
Understood.
That's a level we don't do.
I, I thought Penn was going to be making pickups for the general public. You could, they would call and go to the general public.
I don't know if they're not in that business.
Well, what you might be remembering, so for a short period.
I'm pretty familiar with this facility. You guys know that, right? You know, I've studied this for quite a few years.
But they're not in that business. You have to be in that business.
Yes, I think what you might be referring to is Penn, Penn, their ground ambulance, not the helicopter, Penn Star helicopter, Penn Star, they have a ground ambulance. They were the advanced life support provider for half-retailship for, I believe it was like a year or so. And for whatever reason, didn't work out. And then Norbert is covering half-retailship as part of their response area. So in that instance, they were doing your 911-type service on the ground. That was the one example, at least somewhat locally where they were doing that. But if you see Penn's ambulance kind of drawing around, that's what you're seeing is inter-facility transfers or if they had a patient with Penn Star as an example, they didn't intercept and that Penn Star landed helicopter two different, like a month or two ago, they looked like a Strickler patient. And, you know, that was an instance where, you know, they were acting as an 911 ambulance, sort of, to get their patient down to Philly faster.
The Penn, the original design for the Penn facility had two ambulance bays. So are they going to give you one or are they going to use, give you some additional space? And do you have a contract with Penn or an understanding how this is going to work or commitment for any number of years?
I think really it's going to be, I mean, there's nothing permanent down there. We're actually going down there this Friday to walk through. They have space in their parking garage that we will at least charge in theory two units, even though we're just going to have the one ambulance down there. And then a room that they had originally dedicated towards security on site, they moved that to some other part of the building, which they'd already planned for. So they had an open room, which worked out perfectly.
So basically it's new space where you're, for that, your.
Correct. It's undercover.
Aiman or Bob can ask a question. So you spoke about cross-training. What would it take to cross-train if we do hire new police? Make sure that they're all cross-trained, do fire EMS. Would that help you? Can that be done? I know some of them are cross-trained, but anyone new, they'd have equipment that they would have to take. Is that something that could be done?
It's always a possibility to be able to do that. We'd have to work out, but there would have to be a priority of who, if there's a call, who goes where. You know, I mean, those kind of things would have to be worked out, but is it possible?
Sure. But if there's a big fire, you're having a lot of police there as well, correct?
Mostly they have blocking traffic and trying to control that.
But if you need, yeah. But I mean, you're having someone that could do two functions as opposed to one function, correct? Or is that an FOP issue, you know, a union issue and?
It's not a pay issue.
Well, that's, that's fine if you pay a little bit more and then you don't have to have someone full-time. I just didn't know.
Wait, are you suggesting that our police officers become volunteer firemen in addition to?
No, some of them that, that are, yeah, some of them that are, that are trained.
Yeah, but during their, when they're working for us, I'm confused by what you're saying.
If, if, if there's a six-alarm fire, five-alarm fire, three-alarm fire, my guess is those would, those would be the first ones that would, that would go to that scene. And depending on what the circumstances are, they are cross-trained, if they need to block traffic, that's fine. But they, they could serve in other functions as well. I think that could help with our budget.
So I gotta say, I'm kind of getting uncomfortable with the board of commissioners sitting here like suggesting how.
You're talking about cross-training.
Why, why, I mean, that's the job.
No, I mean, I mean, no, you cross-train, you cross-train police.
Sean, I'd rather have my police doing their police job.
But if there's a fire, if there's a fire.
Well, I'm sure they would.
If there's a fire, we have mutual assistance agreements with surrounding fire companies. They're all having a training.
Apparently we're not making the time, John.
And we don't have money in the budget necessarily to do that.
But, well, that's mutual assistance.
Not making ALS time. You're not asking a policeman to do that.
Instead of having two policemen block traffic, one can block traffic and one can get on a hose.
Thank you. I mean.
Hello?
It's not, it, it.
Well, then how do you, how do you know we're, all right, all right. I think we're kind of getting in the weeds here now. So let's go back.
I don't, I don't, I don't.
I think, yeah, there are some other people at the other end of the table that have some questions. I know I have some, but John, go ahead.
Bill, a mechanics question. So if we go the route you're suggesting, next year, your first slide would say, discuss general millage, stormwater fees, sewer rent, and emergency services, right?
Yes.
So then we would handle those as a separate unit, address reductions, increases, mostly increases.
Yeah, I would recommend that it not be emergency services.
Well, whatever you want.
Yeah, I would recommend that it not be emergency services, just meaning the civic of fire, just because the police is not part of this, and we wouldn't wanna confuse that. But, yeah, yes, it becomes...
So, mechanics, that's how we would handle it.
Yes, and then you're, as a board, you're managing any incremental changes in those. And one thing that we talked about in the special meeting back in the springs, when we talked about fire company funding, is to ask the fire companies to provide the board with a five-year forecast, and then present that kinda forecast to the board, and to a point where you, as a board, feel comfortable with what has been presented to you, and you understand what the numbers mean in terms of service delivery and staffing requirements and all of those kinda details in the five-year forecast, and then that way, you can adopt it in one form or another, and then, then you're managing the plan, instead of every year having this, this big discussion on whether it's two hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred thousand, or what the, it's known. You can anticipate, in year three, you might see a bump, and this is why it's gonna bump, and it's not a surprise.
Jay, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple questions. So, to get back to Rich's comment about response times, those response times aren't, if we do nothing, the response times are not gonna get better with development in Berwind, Devon, and Laura Mary Township. Accurate, to say?
Yes.
And two, two underlying themes on why, when I started talking about finding a fund, funding the fire department separately earlier this year, one, to give the fire department a basement, a baseline of what you can expect from the township. With that expectation, will you be able to fundraise more and fill that gap that there's future needs?
Yeah, I mean, we're not, I mean, at least at the moment, we're not backing off of our, currently what we do through the fire company, which encompasses the fire and the ambulance component, as well as the work of our auxiliary unit with some of the events that they do. So, we would continue to fundraise and keep doing those things. The one thing, you know, conceptually, that we've talked about this, if, if the township were to walk down the road of a tax or a fee, for Radnor Township residents only, so, you know, the folks sitting here tonight, if they're calling for an ambulance, that ambulance deployed to go to their house, you'd go through the regular billing process, but we would just accept whatever insurance pays, and that's it. And there's no balance bill for Radnor Township residents only. So, that's something else you could do as part of this discussion, again, for Radnor Township residents only. If they're, everyone's kinda putting into that system, we're not balancing like this, folks. So, that's something else that you can, you can consider as a, you know, as part of the package of this.
So, let me ask that question a different way. So, if you know, on January first, that you have one point two million from Radnor Township, but you foresee a gap or an increase in costs, are you more confident that you're gonna be able to fundraise, knowing that you have that baseline and you really need to just shoot for this target gap?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, if you're, say, for, you know, twenty, twenty-five thousand short versus seventy-five or eighty, I mean, that's, that's two different animals.
Yeah.
Like, one of the things that we do, granted, we can't use it for, you know, staff for benefits or salary, the state fire commissioner's a grant program. We usually get between fourteen to fifteen thousand on the fireside, and between seventy, eight thousand on the EMS side. So, that's a nice grant that unless you really screw it up, you pretty much get it every year, so that can help, that helps deal with issues year to year. Yeah, answer your point, yeah, that, I guess, less is that stress that falls on me. I'm paid, so I have to deal with it, but for the volunteers, it's less stress on them, where they kinda, again, just focus on going on calls and living their life versus, instead of putting their life at risk and then fundraising a community like this to rest of their life. Now, you gotta think about that whole dynamic here.
Sure.
As you're, as you're having this discussion. That doesn't pertain to me, because, again, I've been paid with it, so I deal with the good and the bad, whatever. But for the volunteer folks, you know, they, they're putting a lot into this, and I think creating an environment where they're not stressing about this stuff encourages people to volunteer and to get involved, or maybe others people are teetering, am I gonna do a few more years? Well, if they're not stressing about what's gonna happen with funding, then, yeah, they're probably will stay engaged, because that is a stress for all the volunteers.
Do you mind if I just tag on to that really quick? Because, so, along these lines, with regards to the fundraising, do you think if this is now listed out on people's bills as a separate line item, fire expense, do you think that's gonna, and I don't know what your fundraising looks like when you do your annual fund, do you think this is, that will hinder you? So, if I get it, and I'm like, oh, you know, I always donate to this, but now I'm, I know I'm definitely paying, and I've been paying something all along. I don't really have the same awareness. Do you think, are you afraid that it will hurt your fundraising efforts?
I mean, it could.
Are there other townships that have this kind of model, and...
My, well, he's a colleague, but he's a friend as well, a man on township of Aixter County, when they implemented the fire tax over years ago, they actually stopped doing fundraising. They looked at what that number is, and they basically funded it, because they just made a decision as a community, said, why are we, we have an essential service like this, we just need to kinda cut the cord here and just make sure we're funding this thing, just make sure we're, we're hitting the response time targets, and not relying on volunteers, not only go on the calls, but to keep fundraising.
If it's an essential service...
I'm sorry, I'm gonna yield back to Jay, because I kinda cut him off, so please.
Good job.
Yeah, thanks, Jay. So, if it's, again, if it's an essential service, why can't we charge tax?
I respect, you're the policymaker. I'm just providing, you guys, it's not mine.
It's a rhetorical question.
I totally respect your role.
It's a rhetorical question. And, and then, just one more thing, getting back to that cross-training, I did have a conversation with Chief Flanagan, and I don't know if you could, if you can re-outfit cars or something, or have equipment in there, but cross-training is important, and to get back to, John, your point, you know, I don't care where it comes from. I want the first person to respond to be qualified if it's, somehow, it's public safety. It's, you know, we named the park now First Responders. And I just think in today's day and age, we need to think smart. As I said, we need to think outside the box, and we need to really start cross-training all of our employees, whether they're administrative or public works or first responders.
I guess a couple things. So, I'm sure Chief Flanagan already told you, so, the police are getting a baseline of training. They're getting CPR training, they're getting first aid training, they're doing what's called stop-the-lead training. They're responding when they're available, they're going to ambulance calls with us. They're helping with lifting. They're, that's been happening for many years already, but I know a couple, I don't know who had mentioned it, but there are very distinct functions that are going on with certain events. The one good thing, we live in a successful community. Yes, we do have structured fires, but it's not like we're in the city of Chester, or in other areas that maybe aren't as well off, typically where you see, you know, city economics aren't the greatest, you're seeing more fire activity, but nonetheless, we do get events. So, when those events do occur, and you referenced a fire, I can tell you the police don't have time to start doing stuff with us. We have to get roads shut down.
Sure.
We have hoses going across roads. People don't care when they see things. They drive around and try to get through. So, as I mentioned a few meetings about how this looks down here versus up there where I volunteer, it's a whole different animal with the traffic. So, the police serve a vital function. It seems very basic and vanilla, but it's critical when they're getting roads shut down for us, so we can safely do our jobs, fight a fire, you deploy emergency medical services, what have you. But I just want you to know that a lot of that cross-training assistance is happening. There are, like, Joe McGuire's a classic example, and, you know, he's a police officer here full-time, you know, but say Joe responds out and he's in police mode, he can help with some basic things, and that's stuff other guys, that's already hap, it's not formalized, but that's only happening here. That happens up in Tridiferent, that happens in East Town, that happens in Williston Town, where you have, you know, different guys that have, or gals that have background. They're pulling hoses on, they're doing different things. But again, you have limitations there. So, I can tell you many examples where the police don't show up on our calls because they're responding to a police call.
Sure, and I understand, and Jake, sorry, just, just one more thing, but a lot of our police, and I know a bunch of them also do fire, so to coordinate with that on a calendar or whatnot, I just think, I would just, I would just think that that would make the most sense if there's more, if it's not cross-training, talk and communication. That's all.
So, I talked about the two, two underlying themes when I started talking about this. One is fundraising aspect from the fire department side, and the second really goes to my board colleagues. For me to get behind and support this, if we're freeing up one point two million or whatever the number is in the budget, you know, I don't wanna see that go back in toward vanity projects. For me to support, it's really gotta be used towards infrastructure, sidewalks, stuff that we hear the residents talk about on a daily basis that are, have deteriorated over the last five, ten years.
Just one more question on Villanova and those calls. Any improvement on getting any of that money for those calls that are not reimbursed from Villanova or other, or other universities over the last few years we talked about?
I mean, we continue, Villanova's example, listen, I think we're over two hundred calls, and I think our report last, we were at one eighty-nine, so we're north of two hundred ambulance calls this year. We're working as best as we can with their administration there. I think, you know, they have been very responsive in trying to resolve issues. The board has helped kinda bring the light, you know, the seriousness of when our ambulances go up there, that we need to make sure that we're not losing money, so to speak, such as we're transporting patients. So, I can just tell you, staying there, it has improved. I can, again, give you financial performance updated numbers.
Right, because this goes to your numbers, because in the prior years, we talked about there was like a seventy thousand dollars worth of unreceived billing that was out there attributable to the schools. Has that decreased or has that increased?
I'd have to look at the numbers again. I can give them to you.
Or remained the same?
I think it's improved slightly, but it's not, it's not dramatic. It's not dramatic enough where I could say, you know, Commissioner Booker, we can knock that down to two twenty because we had, you know, thirty-five thousand dollar swing at Villanova. It's a heavy user. Brady Eastern are very, very light. Military Academy, we're up there quite a bit. Villanova's a big user from collegiate higher institution, you know, going there. So, that hasn't really changed. I'm more than happy to, like, pull the updated numbers, you know, like I've done for Bill and for Ryan, that's he as well, just you have it.
What are things in the work, Eamon, that, in the works that could be helping you on the state legislative level that could be helping you recoup some of that income? I know that they're working.
Correct. I mean, one of the things, I mean, if they, they allow, and I know they're working on, if they give us the ability to utilize state relief funds potentially for staffing, I can tell you that number isn't that, that number is gonna be significantly less. So, right now, we can't use it for that. We have a ton of relief money. It's restricted funding, so the state's sort of freeing it up so we can use it for different things. But at the same time, we have insurance for the volunteers, we have death benefits, things like that that are tied up. So, we gotta be careful if and when we have the ability to start using that funding that we're not creating an issue on the, on the flip side with the volunteers, which is really what that money's intended for, health and safety of volunteers.
And then even the reimbursement checks. Sean, do you mind if anyone else asks a question just a second?
Yeah.
And then the reimbursement checks that go right directly to, for ambulance that go directly to, you know, the individuals as opposed to coming to you guys, they're looking at changing that as well. That would be helpful as well.
Yes, yeah, so the, yeah, so, great, I, I just, I just literally just sent the bills as I was sitting in the back. We got our updated report for the year from our billing department. It said thirty-five percent of our calls this year are class-sized commercial medical, and then forty-five percent's Medicare. So, on the commercial medical side, the vast majority of times, as you just stated, those checks are going directly back to the patient, and we get into a cash flow problem. So, we're trying to make payroll. You're moving money around constantly from investments to general fund and trying to make things work, because, again, you're, you could, we could, you could pick Commissioner Booker up. Obviously, he went through this because he knows how it works. He would turn the check over, we get people to forget, and then you're, we pick him up tonight, he goes to hospital, and then we don't see a dollar of that for ninety to hundred twenty days. So, again, multiply times hundreds of times, and you can see on a bi- linked payroll basis, things get interesting as we're trying to move money around and make things work, which we do. That's also a reason why, until that's fixed, that contributes to the problem, because there's a constant cash flow challenge that goes on. And that's just germane to us. That's every agency, especially those that are doing EMS billing, nine-one-one response.
So, I have one more question, but I'm gonna ask Jack, do you guys have anything?
So, we obviously have a lot of questions for you, and this is not really the appropriate forum for a lot of them, because they deal with operations and your budget. We, looks like we're going to be going into next year paying about twenty percent more to the fire companies than we do to the library, and we have three commissioners on the library board. Would you have an appetite for putting a commissioner on your board vote for better communication to and fro, and also so that we can, there's an opportunity to facilitate or bring some good ideas? Maybe do that as well?
I don't think, I mean, we have a board director's meeting on Wednesday, and we're happy to bring it up. You know, Manager Nikowski, he's attended meetings in the past at the fire company. Not to mention this again, but I do think, whether using the public safety committee or creating a group that includes more, like, it could be, you know, Bob, Bill, myself, you know, two of you and then Chief McGuire or something, and that's our board, and you include a citizen or two, maybe, however you think, just to help kinda steward the funding and manage what's going on. It's a lot of discussion we're having here tonight. A lot of that's already fleshed out, and then you get here and it's just very succinct and clean to get it done.
Yeah, not to put too fine a point on it, the concern, I think, is not so much how you use the funds that the township allocates for you, it's how you are raising additional funds, and whether there's money that you're leaving on the table that you could be picking up. I don't know the answer to that. I assume that the answer is no, but obviously, I don't know that to be the case, and I don't think that we could just say, as like a township created, we need you to open your books and records to us so that we can go through that. We need to have you walk through your billing procedures with us. If you have one person who is on the board, then that person could maybe could do that without having to be a colonoscopy.
Yeah. Well, I mean, not to put you on the spot, Bob, you wanna talk about, we've done that with the billing.
Bounce right off the colonoscopy to Bob, I see what you're saying.
And also, this is different, because we're only about forty percent of your budget, right? Your revenue. So, the township is not even the biggest single contributor.
Right.
So, if we have a separate tax, I think you're right, that you're gonna end up, nobody's gonna, when you get that gift, that gift letter, you're gonna be like, I already paid the tax. And then, and then that sixty percent of your budget is, you know, could be affected.
What percentage of your budget is fundraising? What percentage is the annual budget? What do you guys, do you do that twice a year?
Uh, we're gonna do fire, fire fund drive, ambulance fund drive, and we'll have like all events and things.
It's gonna change.
So, you're looking at, yeah, I just wanna get an update on our board at all. Yes, so fundraising donations, this is, this is twenty eighteen, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. So, ambulance billing is the biggest income driver for paying for the service. Now, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, four twenty-eight in twenty eighteen.
What's TE? What's? TE.
Uh, Tridiferent, they will, they're actually doing their preliminary budget tonight. I believe they have built in their thirty-two, thirty-two or thirty-three thousand for twenty-twenty, so seventy-four Radnor Fire Company.
So, really, very low.
Yeah. So, Radnor covers, geographically, they refer to as Panhandle Tridiferent, so they're covering Old Eagle School Road down Devon Park East, which is the smallest out of the three providers, Berwind, Paley, and Radnor.
Do you know if those gifts are primarily large donors or primarily a couple bucks here and there?
Uh, it's really folks like yourself that are donating, you know, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars at a shot. Occasionally, we'll get a foundation that donates two thousand dollars. You might get someone that requests, you know, fifteen or twenty in a will or something. You get that occasionally, but really, it's driven by a lot of the folks sitting here tonight that are just, you know, doing twenty-five, fifty. We have people who are fixed incomes, but they're doing, you know, ten, fifteen bucks to support the fire company. That's really the direct mail aspect of what we do. That's drive, that number I referenced, that's really the lion's share of it. Nobody, small events and things we do through the auxiliary or just the fire company, it's helping, you know, get the rest of those dollars in, but it's primarily that direct mail fund drive that's getting the donation dollars in the door.
One suggestion too, is, I understand the conversation is for one year, that the board would consider funding this. At that time, that could be determination whether it goes to the ballot.
At that time, that could be determination whether it goes to the ballot as a referendum in the public vote, which then you can incorporate in that ballot issue what you fundraise, what you get from the township, this way, and then it stops the confusion between, okay, wait a minute, township's giving this, I'm giving this, and we're still short. Is, the conversation will always be every year at the board level, and then I think the issue that Sean has is, you know, each year can be a block to this or not, public votes, if it's already set, members have voted, if it has to be increased, it has to go back to the voters. It's not on the board to say, oh, the pressure is, you've got to adjust accordingly. I think, you know, it's.
Bob, if that's the case, if there is a shortfall, we would have to fund that shortfall, we're not going to let the fire.
No, if, for right now, yeah, it would be a one-year commitment, but then the determination would be is based on the information or additional information from the fire company. You could go on the ballot as a referendum and say, oh, this is explained in detail, township's not going to fund it, no more fundraisers, they're going to, the commissioner could do it.
Be worried if it fails. It'd be really worried if it fails.
So, the referendum would be for the entire 100% of their budget or just the 40% of the township?
It would be for all of theirs, public would say, we like this, we need this, because I think there's a story to be told that.
I do too.
This is only short-term, the trend is going full-time. Upper Mary, I believe, has gone full-time now.
Not yet, but they're, they're combination.
But they're wrapping, pulling that back into, into the township.
Yeah, but it wouldn't.
I don't think we want to run that operation.
You wouldn't do a referendum for the, for the fees from, from the ambulance, from the insurance fees, you just need.
Oh, no, that's.
It would just be the piece that is funded by public money.
Correct, correct. Exactly, I'm sorry.
Right, right. Well, so, I, I had a, something that was along those lines. My view is that we should not have a separate millage for this year. I, I would increase it, the number that I, I would propose would be to build into the budget 1,160,770, which is 200,000 for the additional request, and no more additional for Bryn Mawr or Brumal Fire, Brumal Fire Companies, and then leave it in the budget and reevaluate either a referendum or a separate millage, and, referendum for a separate millage is fine with me for next year.
For 2021, you're.
Yeah, that's what I would propose.
Oh, Aiman, thank you, I'm thinking, so, I'm sorry, I apologize, that's to me. Well, I, you know, I, you know, I think it's very important that we, that we fund, and I think it's, it's important that you guys have a, you know, a good handle on the revenue that you can expect to receive, so, you know, I would be very interested in making sure that we have more transparency, you know, and whether it is, you know, somebody sitting on the, you know, from here, sitting on your board, or you creating, recreating, or any, I think in any case, that would be beneficial, so, I think the more people can understand, the more all of us can understand, and also start to plan for the future is going to be important. Does anyone have anything else?
I think maybe suggestion is, is if we follow that, that theory, it still ends up with a shortfall within.
Rich's theory.
Rich's, we still will end up in a shortfall that we're going to have to either fill that gap or cut services, either level, so.
A shortfall in our budget, if we pull it back into our budget.
Right.
Without raising millage.
Correct.
That's pulling it back, because we were at about a 1.2.
Is that, is that what the recommended, is that what your thoughts were, Commissioner?
My, my thoughts were, without regard to the overall budget. What I propose is to increase, write that down, increase the amount of township expenditure on the fire companies by the amount I said, which was 200,000.
200,000.
So, how that affects the budget is yet to be determined, whether that would be reductions in spending elsewhere or increase in taxes, but I think I've been sufficiently convinced that additional funding for the fire companies necessary, mainly because I don't want to see a life safety situation where somebody doesn't get picked up for eight or 10 minutes and that makes that crucial difference to that person's life, right? I, I just can't see chancing that when there's a call. So, I, I think that it's necessary and the issues facing the ambulance are enough that we should address it. And I, I certainly don't commit to increasing taxes because of that, you know, that's yet to be determined.
Well, and I, I think along those lines, you don't want to be in a situation where something major happens and then all of a sudden, you're, you're in a reactive situation and say, okay, we've got to fund all this right away, and then now it's your reactionary, it's then trying to be proactive and try to address a lot of these, not all at one time, but you're trying to move in that direction, as it's a close relationship that you have with the board, and then I agree with you, they say there should be representation on their board for that, that amount of money.
So, my question, if we bump that down to 200,000, I mean, you talked about 250 as being what you needed in order to make an impact on those response rates. Is 200 going to do it? I mean, do you need those 100,000 people?
I'm just going to have to get back with our treasurer and we're going to look at the numbers, we're going to plug it in and see where we're, we're at for next year. Because we're obviously going through our internal process right now with the budget, so we'll plug 200 in and see where, where we land, what we're projecting for next year. That's, that's most I can tell you right now, and I'll get back, you know, if you're okay, then I'll filter through Bill, Bill White, and, you know, we'll go from there.
I guess my only concern with that suggestion is sure, pull it back into the budget, but my concern, my concern is going to be.
Sir, you're on the hook. I will report it directly.
My concern is going to be doing that with the understanding that we are going to go to referendum, because, you know, I'm concerned about that, that's an iffy proposition, that's a lot of work, I think, on fire company, on the township. As commissioners, we would all need to be behind that and I think, you know, promote that, I mean, that's, it's not just like, oh, we'll go to referendum, I mean, you're going to have to educate people, we're going to have to get the word out, that's going to be an expense. Who's going to incur that expense? The township, the fire department, you know, I, I think that's an iffy proposition. I'd rather see the millage, so, dedicated millage. But I may be a little bit.
Well, I think the dedicated millage makes sense in the context of a bigger plan, because that starts to educate people when they see that and understand that. And in addition, it also would be important to move that way if we ever are able to do a fee, a fire fee or a fire tax per se, rather than, you know, just surprise everybody with this. So, I think it's a, a good approach to slide a sound.
Voting millage takes the, takes the risk out of it, because it could go the wrong way.
Then we're right back where we started and with a smaller window to figure it out.
But if the public say this was just a show gig, we knew it probably would fail, so.
But if, sorry, but if dedicated millage affects how much they can fundraise, because people are going to say, yeah, it's tax or a charity, so they do want to give that and there's tax write-offs and there's laws about some of these houses pay more than 10,000 in property taxes and what you're allowed to write off, so they would probably prefer to write a separate check as opposed to have that put in on their taxes. But if that affects, I don't know, let's say 200,000 or 250,000, some are all of that money in your fundraising, then we're going to have to even raise that again to cover that shortfall. So, that would be my, you know, my concern, it's, I get the transparency side of it and that is wonderful, but in reality, I think this could possibly cost us, because we're just, A, going to handcuff ourselves, and it just seems that there's, I would just rather every year you come and you say what you need and we work on doing that as opposed to either handcuffing ourselves or doing something that could affect your revenues going forward. I just, I'm scared, and then once you do it, it's hard to take it away, and I would be concerned or be scared that once it's done, it is really hard to go back to how it was.
Last thing, I would just comment on the, like I said, that number where we're at with the 250 over the next two years, I feel comfortable with that number. But Old Only, as, as was already mentioned, as we get into, we certainly aren't going to have for this year, but as we get into next year, the township does really need to make a decision on what they want as far as the standard to cover. So, Commissioner Booker perfectly pointed out some of these concerns tonight, response times, having enough personnel, having the right equipment to get to these calls. Township Old Only doesn't just apply to us, it's our partners at Brumal as well. What is the township looking for from a service delivery standpoint? Because that definitely drives a lot of really what we're doing here as far as what we need as far as staff, that can dramatically change things. Are you okay with 15 minutes, eight minutes, five minutes? We need to make that determination. We covered that early this year in pretty good detail. We can continue to, you know, provide you reports on what we're doing, we really need you all, and we'll work with you on it to determine what level of cover, standard of cover you want for Radnor Township, for the residents here, we really need that, because that will help really guide our decision-making. So, that's all I have, but I'll, like I said, I'll follow up with Finance Director White, but I appreciate you all talking about this and asking good questions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Aiman. Well, I don't know that we're any closer to giving you a recommendation, are we?
Well, hopefully, we're closer, because we spent some time talking about it, so.
Thoughts? I mean, I think we hear where Rich stands on this, and I think I hear where Sean stands on this. John expressed it. I don't know, Brooke and Jake and Jack?
I think that sending this out to referendum creates unforeseen hazards. The public, once they set the rate at a specific dollar figure or they set the dollar figure that they intend to bring in at a specific dollar figure, eventually, the fire company will give more and we're going to be in a position of saying, well, the public has said it's only supposed to be however many mills, we feel handicapped, we can't give any more than that, otherwise, we're going back to the general fund. I like the idea of breaking out the millage. I recognize that that may have an effect on their ability to fundraise, but we can of course correct. If it torpedoes our ability to fundraise, then the next year, we'll bring it back in. My hope is that this will be part of a larger effort to educate people about the need that they have. This is breaking out on your bill, you now see you're paying this many dollars, it is not funding everything, and that could be a talking point for the fire company. But, you know, we'll, we'll find out, and if it's not, then, like I say, we'll course correct. As for the 250,000, they say they need 250,000. Either we believe them and we give them the money, or we decide that we don't believe them, in which case, we probably shouldn't give them anything, or we need to audit their books. But just kind of announcing that I'll give you some dollar figure less than that really doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Aiman says they need the money, Aiman says it's necessary to cover. I tend to believe them, I'd like to have somebody on the board, but in the absence of that, I'm just going across what he has to say.
Well, I think, I think he said he's going to come back next week, he's going to look at those numbers and see.
By all means, speaking term of disposal, I will believe him even more, a lower dollar figure, but we have to take his word for it or we have to audit his books. I don't see a principled way to just announce it'll be 150,000 this year.
Yeah, I agree. Aiman knows his books inside and out, I'm not going to, I'm not going to review them. I certainly don't know his operations as well as he does, so if he says that's the number they need, I'm going to go with it. If he's going to come back to us, great. We've been talking about this for years, so this may just be the time to do it.
And just one question, so Rich, if we were, if we were to look at your option and included the millage rate into the, if we just increased the current millage rate, wouldn't that be spelled out on the building you receive, what it's going for? So, wouldn't people see that it's being used for fire services?
We don't call on it.
No, it wouldn't, it would just be in the budget, it would just be in the budget. And, and again, I think splitting out the millage is going to have collateral consequences that will result in a further increase being necessary. So, what I'm proposing would be to keep it the way it is, which it's not broken out. We would, in our budget, we would make it clear, budget is going up by 200,000 for this year as a result of increasing full-time paid employees for the fire company, and we can make that, and we have people and communications folks to make that clear. So, we, we would do it on our own, is what I propose.
I think I'm still leaning toward breaking it out and at least trying it for a year to see what, you know, fundraising numbers should come in and if that, that program's a success.
I, I don't know how much people are really getting to pay attention to that, to be honest with you. I mean, I'm inclined to believe that it probably won't affect it that much at all. I mean, I get what you're saying, if it's put in people's faces, I guess, that now they're being taxed for the fire company, that would affect it, but I just don't think anybody's going to, to be honest.
Well, you heard, you heard Aiman, in the case of Mannheim Township in Lancaster, they recognized that it was going to be an impact and they just built in the entire amount into the separate millage, which I think that that's a better way to look at that and recognize, you're not going to ask people to donate anymore, you're going to build that in. If you're going to separate it, I would add the 283, whatever that thousand number he has, in addition to this, and put that as separate millage, because people are not going to give. They, they will know.
Oh, no. Maybe.
I, I would say, majority of people will know.
I guess we're never going to, I guess we're never going to know unless we give it a go.
But if that's the case where we're fully funding them, could the township take over, quote unquote, the firehouse? So, it's not a separate entity, like a third-party entity? Could we do that or not?
I would.
But then we could start charging fees, though.
The only comment I, if I may make, is the fire companies, they have to work for their mon, for their money on that side, because if you take it all away, no offense, they don't do anything, they just come here, I mean, I think. Like the ones that, you try it, you see how it goes, with communication that they put onto the public, educating, you know, here's how it is, and then the township, our end, people will decide what level of service they want, and I think response time is the key point we're solving, what level do you want? And I think everybody wants to make sure that, you know, minutes matter.
One or the other, I know we keep talking about feeing about, but in addition to the fact that we don't control the fire department, an additional problem is that you can only fee based on the amount of service that's consumed. So, like for the sewer company, for the sewer bill, it's not just everybody pays their fraction of the sewer, you pay based on your usage. For the fire company, a fee, if we were able to do that, I think the public, unless there's a new law that would be drafted, it would be, you get picked up by an ambulance, you get a fire put out at your house, you pay that fee. If you don't have any fire needs that year or EMS needs that year, then you wouldn't end up paying the fee.
You know what stormwater have, has stormwater?
Stormwater is broken up based on the size of your property and the impervious cover that you have, because stormwater affects all of the township. We all have, you know, rain that hits our buildings.
It's the same thing, fire affects all the, and again.
Yeah, for emergency services.
I, I think you could make the case that it's exactly the same, Jack, that you would measure it by square footage under roof. It's exactly the same, it's a fee. But here's what I would say, I, I don't think John agrees, so, John, we, we need John to, to advocate for it and to take that position, and I, I think it's difficult right now. If you are going to break out this 1,200,000 roughly, then I, I would be emphatic, we need to reduce the budget by that amount, so that, if you break it out, it's not a matter of, oh, we're going to break it out and charge 9% extra and then we're just going to backfill that, the budget. charge 9% extra, and then we're just going to backfill that budget with the amount that we split out. So I think that that's my, if you break it out, that's my biggest concern.
So you're saying, if we pull this out, make it its own millage, give it its own thing, that you want to see the other, the budget on the other side reduced by that amount?
Exactly.
I just want to close the loop on this. Stormwater is also provided for the Municipal Authorities Act, we have a separate issue for that, so it's a little different.
Right, it would take some, it would take some legal analysis, and we need to get comfortable, but again, I believe that we could get there if we really wanted to pursue it, and it would be a fee in exactly the same way as a stormwater fee, but I don't think that that's really on the table right now.
John Russ isn't here, so we're not.
Yeah, we're not going to.
I don't think it's on, that's what I just said, I don't think it's on the table.
Just a last comment, Christian Farre reminded me of something. As you're talking about these numbers and looking towards '21, '22, '23, you have to remember, we're talking about all three fire companies, Radnor, Bryn Mawr, Brymawall, as far as currently where money's getting spent, and the lion's share is tied up in operators, so firefighter EMTs, firefighters, firefighter medics, and paramedics. The only folks we have from a supervisor's standpoint that are getting paid were myself and other gentlemen that we converted from an hourly to a salary position just a couple months ago at Radnor, so there's two, and then there's Bryn Mawr just instituted a career staff supervisor for the first time ever this past year. So that's it. So you got to remember, like, these different costs and things you're talking, we even got into paid fire chief, paid deputy chief, all those different roles, so you're talking massive, massive numbers. We're not even really getting into that. So as you talk about possibly assuming more control or getting more involved, like, this is, this is really pennies, we really get to these big numbers, so just to, so you understand, just right now, where the fires are paying folks, again, loads is taught with the, with the operators, not with paid administration. So thank you, thank you again.
Thank you, Aiman. Sarah, do you have a comment?
I'm not going to use my name, Bill, it'll be Uber for me. Rich, I think I heard you say, and I'd like clarity.
Is this another attack on Rich Booker?
No, it is not.
I'm doing my job here as Commissioner for representing the people.
Rich, I was referring to, I thought I heard you make a statement, that Bryn Mawr would not get more, or Brymawall, and I just want to remind you, there are some of us who, for fire, Radnor's not coming to us, we live under the aegis, the umbrella of the Bryn Mawr fire company. So don't think it's just for Radnor. And I do want to say, as a senior, I do make a donation to the fire company every year, $50 to fire and $50 to EMS. If it became a tax, that's off the charts, because my income cannot expand that much. So I just want you to know that the Medicare people, we're not doing well these days, and we would have to make a choice which would eat into Aiman's fundraise.
Thank you, Sarah.
So were you keeping money for Bryn Mawr, or not including money for Bryn Mawr?
You heard correctly, I would propose no additional increase for those fire companies.
Increase. No, no increase.
Bill, would you do me the favor, Leslie Morgan Farrode, and switch back to the first page when we began this discussion on all the 19 to 20 comparisons to these, you know, the special, what we're going to give mine, like Surrey, and, okay, could you, can I see that page, because I just want to bring something to people's attention? I give, I even write out checks for my son to give sometimes, and he doesn't even live in the state. So I looked at this, and I said, oh, well, then I will be donating to them. If I'm paying a tax that's separated out, and this is just me, I'm not going to also donate. So the library, though, has been successful, Lisa, so you may be right too. Maybe in a Radnor, it won't be affected, we don't know until we try it. I'm open-minded, I want to pay everybody, make sure that the library, used to be at 800,000, just a few years ago, please look at that in the next week. It used to be at 800,000, and the new building was supposed to cost less, because it was much more efficient, okay? I remember that. So they do have a $4 million capital endowment, and they are able to fundraise every year. They're very successful at fundraising. There's money to be had on this list, you guys, that can balance out some of the things. And again, these aren't things that you control, right? These aren't things that are, like, these are things we want, but they are not emergency services, they are not your ambulance. If you did a referendum, and I think Bob is right as well, there's a story to tell here, it's happening all over the country, the reimbursement rates, the non-volunteerism, maybe we could get the colleges involved and give credits in lieu of volunteerism. Internships do that, maybe you could get some for three or four years, I don't know. But I'm more concerned about my EMS and my fire than I am my library. They have $4 million, and maybe they've even gone back to five, they used to have $5 million, but they spent a million on the addition. I think you've got to be a little tougher, Commissioners. I don't think it should be the taxpayer burden this year. You already had that last year, and you had, and you had $7 or $8 million in debt. There are hard choices that you will have to make, and you're adults, but I think that your constituents would absolutely back the fire and EMS, at least to 90% of their request, and that the story has to get out there, that's why I said with the police and the fire, that maybe that we do a year campaign, because I also think that people shouldn't be able to call for their hairdryer blowing out, you know, if they can't get their hairdryer started, even if they're 85. I don't think that that should be, they should have to pay for that. So there's some work to be had on educating the public on what police do, and what EMS and fire, and ambulances do, and I think that that could help too. Yes, I know that these calls come in, the police have told me this in this township, you know, a blow dryer blew out, and you got to call and you had to go. That's not acceptable for the taxpayer to fund that. But if you have to go, then they have to be charged. So how you do that as a PR, and make some hard choices, but your general population should not be burdened with a tax increase this year. Thank you.
So just to kind of tie this up and at least round out the conversation on the emergencies, I feel like we have consensus to move forward with the millage, the separate millage. Am I speaking out of turn?
No.
All right, I think, I think we have consensus.
No.
I hear that.
No separate millage.
Yeah, I would be voting for the budget if there's a separate millage.
I think separate millage, a perfectly good thing is to put it on the referendum.
I'm not going to.
And I mean, that's, that's a much better way to get buy-in.
I'm going to press on.
So you know, again, you know how I feel about it. Majority rules on the board.
It's consensus, we call it consensus at this moment.
And, excuse me, in preparation then for next Monday's discussion, when the ordinance is up for vote for introduction, would it be helpful for the board to, I can, I can resummarize where these numbers are at. I mean, where we're at right now is we have positive net revenue to the tune of about 1.2 million. When you consider fire and all of our community organizations, that's, it's like 2.4 million. So if, if the board goes in a different direction next Monday, would it be helpful to see what the numbers would be in terms of what would have to be cut in dollar amounts?
Should I be?
And just by order of magnitude, 1.2 million is the entire trash and recycling division, the entire park maintenance division, like, it's not ones and twos here and there, I mean, that's a significant number.
Yeah, but Bill, the deltas.
I'm just giving you an example, order of magnitude, I'm not saying that that's what the board suggested.
The delta is only $250,000, that money's in there today, it's in the budget.
It's not in these numbers here. This is the way we explained it back in October.
What's in capital?
What's not in that, this, the 2020 numbers, these numbers here do not include fire or the community organizations. That's why there's such a big positive net revenue number.
When you say do not include the organizations, you mean at all?
At all.
Not the increase, just not at all?
Not at all, zero.
So if you kept the millage for the fire services, separate, and added in the immunity groups, what does that look like? What was that? I forget what that.
That would be covered under.
Well, that's what we presented last Monday. So at 1.2 million, we could reincorporate in all of the community organization groups, the library, the seniors, all of these amounts, which total 1.226. And that would basically bring this to break even, and then the fire company would be funded in addition to that with the new millage.
And it would be negative.
Yeah, 1.2.
If there was new millage, it would not be negative. Without the new millage, it would be negative. To the tune of, you know, whatever we ultimately land on, on the numbers, maybe they're not quite this high, maybe they're trimmed down.
And that's recognizing the budget that you've put forward from the township doesn't include, so this doesn't include any of the things that we heard from the staff at our last meeting up here.
No, it's.
Some of the new initiatives, so the new police officers, the new public works, the new, some of those other things that were asked for, the changes for the storm, you know, money for, to do the stormwater ordinance, money to do new, you know, comprehensive plan, thank you.
Cal plan, zoning plan.
Yeah, none of that's in there, this is, that's status quo.
Yes.
With increases for, and I know I asked you this, you know, around trash and recycling.
Yes.
Because we know that's increasing, we know, we've seen those numbers, we know what that looks like. So it includes things like that, but it doesn't include any of the additional things that the staff presented and asked for.
That is true, yes.
And that's because of this $3 million deficit on all other revenues.
Well, a lot of that is, we proposed that that would be discussed next year, because the board needs time to actually go through all those, like the staffing and that, the board needs time, you're not going to make a decision within a month on all of those without really going through that, so that was the intention, to go next year and to review those. Like, because this year, we're doing all the different areas.
I just wanted to make the point that it is status quo, it is pretty much status quo, with the exception of, you know, increases for things that we know are in good business.
Commissioner Borowski, I would disagree, it's not status quo, because it's $3 million less in revenue.
In terms of operations and.
In terms of operations, yes, that is what I'm, yes, it is status quo.
But that, the reduction in revenue is part of the reason why we're in this situation.
Bill, does that include OPEB? Because we had that issue before, are we pulling?
It does, yes.
Are we pulling money out of our reserves? So we're not.
Right now, we're not.
As proposed, we're not.
So I think what I would need is to go through that $3 million reduction in revenue, I don't, I don't, I know you had it up there last, last week, but I don't think we focused in on what that is, why that is, and the reason I made the point about an offset, if you, if you take that out of the millage and make it a separate millage for the fire, I wanted to see the offset, so that we didn't backfill it, and exactly what's happening here is we're backfilling that. So what's the 8 million? Why are we 3 million down?
Well, it's not so much that we're 3 million down in 2020, it's that there's one-time revenue realized in 2019 that's inflating that number.
That's permitting and the other things, right?
That's exactly right, yeah. So this is, this is the same revenue numbers, just broken out in a little bit more detail so we could see the fines and the cause, the interest in grants, the biggest ones, the licensing and permits, 2019, we're projected to end the year at about 5.8 million. Most of that, and you could see in prior years that that's been around 4 million, three and a half, 4.7, because we had the first pen medicine, the first half of that pen medicine, King of Precious site developed, 4.3. This year was the second half, we realized the permitting revenue from the second half of that site, and then.
Back to normal.
Back to something that would be considered closer to normal. So that right there is almost 2 million of that number. And then these transfer numbers is the, is the other part of it, I should probably break that out, just because it does add confusion, but the only reason why there's 1.5 million dollars transfers in 19 is, the general fund had to cede the sewer funds some money to get through the first quarter, we were going to anticipate bringing that back to the general fund before the end of the year. So that's, that's where we're getting a $3 million reduction in our other revenues, is primarily from those two areas.
Well, you know, so how can we, so we spent the money from the permits for massive development, and now we say, oh, we need to cut, we need to increase the, the amount of taxes by the, by the fire and all of the other funds, I don't think that's fair. We, if we had a surplus in 19 because of this excess development, then we should have been smoothing that out and planning for that. We can't just spend it and say, oh, well, I guess we've got to raise taxes in the following year.
Smooth it out by?
By not spending it. Right? Obviously, if we have, if we have a deficit that you can't even include fire and all of, and library and those other services in the base budget, then we didn't do a good job of smoothing out that revenue.
Well, I'm going to agree with you, yeah, let's not spend it. And it still puts us in the exact same position for 2020, we only have so much revenue that we're going to generate 2020 to pay for 2020 expenses.
But pulling out of that budget, fire and the library is, that's no place to make, fire and library need to be part of the presentation, the base presentation. So yeah, things like OPEB, 600,000, and MMO, and we increased the police staff last year by five people. I know it was four, because somebody retired, okay, I know.
Actually, the argument back to that is we filled the vacant positions.
Well, if we filled the vacant positions, then it shouldn't have had an impact on the budget, obviously it did, because we spent the money.
But we're not spending the money when they're vacant positions, so when they are refilled, the expenses are going to go up.
Well, then, why is it such a problem then? Why don't, why are we 3 million short on our rev, if we built that in, obviously something happened. So what I'm saying is, if we had 5.7 million in fees for one year, we should have been stockpiling some of that away for prior, look, that's a million, a billion four in additional fees in 19, and we spent it all.
But don't most of the fees go for the reviews and the inspections and all that? It's not really a revenue maker.
The real problem is, that's not it. The real problem is, is that over, over these years of 0% tax increases, where we were relying exclusively on the growth of the Act 511 taxes to fund all of the increasing costs of the township, the payroll, the OPEB funding plan, capital, you know, the cost for the trash and recycling, those, I mean, it's a big number, but in the grand scheme of things, those aren't as significant as the others. We were relying entirely on the growth of these Act 511 revenues, and since the high water mark in 2015, they've backed up on us. And so we've, we're funding 1.6 million in OPEB now, in 2015, we were funding less than a million, so there's 600,000 added there. In 2015, we had those vacant police positions, so we weren't expensing that money. Those positions are now filled, so those are costs to the township. We were relying on Act 511 taxes to fund that, and our primary source is not there. So what's happened is, the expense budget is what it is, and the revenues that we've been relying on to fund it aren't as strong now as they have been in the past, so it's, it's squeezing out these kind of discussions, or it's putting us in a position where we're upside down, when we add the library and the fire, and we put everything back in there, then we're, we're at about a 1.2 million deficit. If you recall, the discussions last year were exactly the same, and the proposal then was, we'll suspend the OPEB funding for a year to get by, and the board, you guys said, no, we'll put it back in, and we did. Otherwise, we'd have had a 1.2 million deficit last year, or budgeted for 2019, and that would have come off of a 600,000 deficit spending here in 2018. And then you can see the bottom-line numbers for the last few years have been, as the Act 511 revenues have backed up on us, you can see that we've deficit-spended in two of those years, and the years where we didn't, you could see spikes in the licensing and permitting fees that have kind of helped bail us out. You could see spikes in the licensing and permitting fees that have kind of helped bail us out.
But we did raise taxes last year and we did three years prior. So we, over the last four years, we've increased 10.6%. Which is above, which is above inflation.
The tax increase in 2016 was specific to the bonds that were issued at that time. They, none of that went to help any of anything that you're seeing on the screen tonight.
But it doesn't matter to the, to the taxpayer. It went up. So we had a 10% increase in four years and that's above inflation. And we're talking about another increase for 2020 and we're presenting a budget without even fire in it.
Will you be circulating a draft of the budget in advance of our next meeting? My suggestion then will be, it's unfair to ask Rich, identify today the specific line items that you want to have cut. Because we don't have that yet, but maybe in advance of our next meeting, Rich, you could just go through and tell us what it is you'd like to cut because Bill and Bob are not in a position right now to tell us what it is we should cut. That's our choice. There's no specific township program that I'm itching to get rid of, but you can maybe convince us. But for today, all we're doing is just saying you want taxes to be the same and they're saying, okay, math. Boring and not really good TV, so let's maybe move on.
Well, I, I would, I would say you were reticent to talk to the fire company about, could they do with less, but you're meanwhile, you're asking the commissioners to go through and, and line item out of thousands of items, the budget from, for, and tell the township finance director and manager what to do, but it seems inconsistent to me, but.
No, that's our job. We run the township. We don't run the fire.
Well, part of the, part of the way we do that is people in light of that, then I would say, you know, if that's the case, then we really shouldn't increase the fire at all.
No, we rely on what the fire company tells us. We have no ability to go through their budget line item by line item. We do have that ability here. You've heard the suggestions from our staff.
You and I disagree on, on.
Yes, we do.
On political and what our job is, commissioner. We, we control what we spend.
Mr. Booker.
We can tell, we tell the, we tell, we tell, commissioner, commissioner. We tell the fire company what we will give them.
I'd be grateful if you could allow me to finish.
I, I did allow you to finish.
Mr. Booker, please allow me to finish.
I allowed you to finish.
Rich, allow him to finish, please.
I allowed you to finish.
Mr. Booker.
Commissioner.
Calm down.
Commissioner Larkin.
Mr. Booker. Mr. Booker.
I, I.
Mr. Booker.
We control what we give to the fire company.
I'm just going to keep saying this.
Commissioner Larkin. We give, we control what we give to the fire company.
Rich, we hear you. Thank you. Jack, please finish.
I'm going back to what I said before. We do not run the fire company's budget. We run our own budget. You've heard from staff. Staff has given you a recommendation. If you disagree with that, then now it's incumbent on you to tell us what it is you would like to cut in particular because we have a math problem. We have a fixed revenue and we have budget and we have budgeted costs, but see that. If you disagree with them, tell them where you disagree with them.
So what is your job as commissioner? Just whatever they tell us, that's what we need to raise and we just raise taxes to fund everybody?
No, I'm going to.
Yeah, that's what you're saying. That's exactly what you're saying.
No, I'm going to have specific.
So you, you have no, you don't want to exercise any kind of restraint or any kind of authority or any kind of accountability. I, I, I hear you. Just take whatever they ask for and that's what you raise taxes to. I disagree with that. I'm, I'm going to look critically at every line item. I don't direct what line items. I direct. Here's what we have. Figure it out within that amount.
You don't even do that. I'm going to have specific line items that I'm going to ask you.
Okay.
There's not going to be a ton of them, but I am going to have specific line items.
Well, I would encourage you to do so because we should not cede our authority to the bureaucracy to just tell us what they need and just raise the taxes on taxpayers. That's not how I, that's not how I represent my folks. Perhaps it is how you do.
All right, moving on. So you will circulate a copy?
Yeah.
For everyone to see.
Bill, the next item is sewer tax, sewer. We developed a plan a couple of years ago. Are you suggesting increases over and above what we had previously?
For the sanitary sewer fund, yeah, so this is a, a hard shift of gears, um, but maybe a good time to do it. So three years ago, the board said, uh, do three years of 10% increases. So 2020 would be the third year of those increases and there's a lot going on on the screen, but if you look at the 2020 budget column, these numbers represent incorporating that 10% increase in. So we'd be pretty close. We'd be upside down by about 160,000. But there's enough, it's the first time I've said this in a few years, there's enough cash in the fund to, to give us enough to float through for 2020 while we evaluate what happens with the system. So.
Very good.
Yes, on the sanitary sewer, it would be the, the rate adjustment. The other caveat to that is if there are capital projects, I mean, most of what we have in cash is tied up in capital. So if we do have breaks or if we, and those would be the only capital projects we'd look to do next year. We would, we would use that cash to the extent it's available. If it, we have a bad year, we're going to need the general fund to help.
And from a predictive standpoint, it's likely that we could see a pumping station. Go back.
Uh, yeah.
I mean, the conversations I've had with Steve and.
Yeah.
The King of Precious one is probably most likely. So, and the payback, the general fund is 19.
Yes, we're hoping to have that all, yeah, we're hoping to have that all cleaned up by the end of this year. Um, and that you could, I've got the 1.45 million right there to reflect. It's offsetting the revenue that was sent in there earlier this year.
Great. Thank you.
There, is there, and sanitary sewer is kind of in a state of suspension while we do this.
An evaluation.
An evaluation.
And while we put together a long-term plan.
Yeah. So that, that one's pretty straightforward. There's not a lot of capital to talk about until we have a plan. But there will be the rate adjustment. Uh, because without that, it, it would not be sustainable.
And we really, at this point, have no idea what's happening downstream. Other than RHM.
Right, right.
So.
Yeah.
I mean, Springfield's in a state of flux.
Yeah.
Delcor is in a state of flux. DCJ is in a state of flux.
Alls we know is that we're at, we're at the wrong end of that food chain.
Yeah.
So when the, the costs start being incurred downstream, it's going to roll up quickly. But they, I mean, I've been here for 10 years. They've been saying it since day one and so there really is no. It is a matter of when, but we just have no idea when. Uh, so that's the sanitary sewer. Uh, stormwater. Really, the, what's going to drive that fund are projects.
So I see you had Ascot Road on there.
Uh, Ascot Road would not be a storm, well, it could be, I guess. I heard a lot about stormwater problems. So if, if the numbers used that in the packet that we distributed at the end of October, the Ascot Road turnback number was about 87, 88,000. That was merely to bring that road up to township standards. And I don't think that includes stormwater. So that would be an amount in addition to that.
70,000.
Yes, yeah, 70, 80,000, somewhere in that ballpark. And we obviously don't even own it yet, so.
Right, right. Yeah.
Or.
But I, I think that the constituents, what they were in here talking about, according to Mr. Addis as he left, because I, I looked at that Ascot Road and I'm like, this doesn't seem like the road is that bad. Why did they want us to repave it? And he said, no, it wasn't repaving. It was stormwater is what they were talking about. And you had, you had it just up there as a project, so I just, I just noticed that.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's been on that list for a while now. But we haven't funded that capital for a while.
Yeah, it's only a funded capital project with 78,495.
And Chip's talking about stormwater, but it's really the road. And there was a sinkhole there. It's not up to standards and it's a small road. I believe the township does um, do snow removal and, and does service the road. So aside from bringing it up to code, nothing's really going to change. Or bringing it up to our standards, nothing will change.
Right.
Well, if we're already plowing the road, why would we take possession of it?
That's the question.
Yeah, what upside do we get?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Liability, not an asset.
The whole thing with these private roads is we, we, we say, hey, it's private road. We don't snowplow. We don't do leaves. We don't repave. If we're already doing that, why would we want to, why would we want to have that dedicated to the township?
Because the neighbors are driving around the sinkhole. There's nobody maintaining it. It's a public safety issue.
Yeah, we provide service in terms of snow removal and, but we, we're not repaving.
But it's a private road. We, we're already going over and above even providing that.
We do that for something. We don't do it for others.
Right, so there are, that is the case. Right, but if it's a private road, that's a homeowner association maintain road. They should maintain.
I don't believe there's an HOA. No, there's no HOA.
But it's not a township road.
Nobody maintains it. This is the problem. This is what I'm saying. There is no maintenance of it, except for snow removal.
Is, is Ascot Road an old road? How, how old is that road? We don't, we don't know.
What begs the question, why haven't the residents who own the private road maintained it?
Hey, they would, I agree.
Because we were hoping the township would take it over.
Yeah, I mean, that's a very specific discussion on it. Like, if, if, if we're not even at a place where we're going to balance the general fund, then unfunded capital projects seems a ways down the road.
Yeah, I think.
But if there's a stormwater project, let's address the stormwater. Maybe we can do something there. Maybe.
Well, for the stormwater.
If we were to run, yeah.
We presented, uh, we presented all the known projects as they exist today. Obviously, with all of these lists between general and stormwater, there's projects being added and modified on a regular basis, uh, which Bob will attest that drives me crazy, but I get it. These things are always evolving. So just, just real quickly, I know there was some confusion. At our special meeting on stormwater, the board had asked the administration to go back and provide a ranking or a scoring to help prioritize. Uh, on the report format that you have, that's what's going on across the top. Uh, the higher the number, the higher the score that that project received with the ranking. And then I included on the last sheet what the methodology was. And so we just applied those ranking scores to all the projects and, and Excel was kind enough to spit this report out. Now, obviously, when you add everything up, it's, it's far greater than what the fund can afford. So this is where it's going to go back. If there are specific projects that the board wants to approve, and this, this is part of what the manager had recommended, we had that meeting on early in 2020, is we have the ability to borrow funds and adjust that stormwater fee to pay for the debt service on those borrowed funds only. Uh, and then we could start moving on those projects almost immediately. In a similar fashion that we did this year with the, uh, the capital projects funding that we did to replace the money that it, it was maturing. So it, at a million dollars of revenue per year and projects in, that are receiving the highest ranking being 2.7, 2.9 million uh, per project, it's hard to imagine that, that there's a non-borrowed way to. So it, it's hard to, it's hard to comprehend a, a funding mechanism that doesn't include some borrowing. Because I just, I don't know if there's a, a fee that everyone's going to agree on that's going to generate cash to fund this. And I'm not even sure that's the most efficient way to do this, but.
What's the bottom line on that 95% ranking?
95, 9.
There it is.
Oh, there it is. There it goes.
There it goes.
It's back. 9.4 million and that's, um, was that four projects?
And these are all projects, those in that highest ranking as well. I mean, projects we've already worked on that already, the work's already been done. There's engineering that's already been done. I mean.
It's working in progress.
Those are in progress. That would be the number to finish them off.
As I understand it, yes. So in light of the fact that we're probably not going to be in a position to incorporate any of this as part of the, the 2020 out-of-the-box budget.
It's like 40 million and I stopped counting, right? I mean, I stopped counting at around 40. What's the total amount? Sorry, do you have a, do you have a total? Okay, you have 40, I'm like, that's, uh.
And then we, we talked about in some of our special meetings, even let's say we had 54 million just land on our laps and the board said, go. It would take decades to install.
Yeah, we, we probably couldn't even spend that four, that nine million if we authorize it for next year anyway.
It would take a couple of years.
Take a couple of years.
Without a doubt.
And the other part is given the construction, what's going on in this area with the numbers, those numbers could go up just based on the work that's being performed throughout the area, the costs going up, so.
So it seems like we should pick a couple, you know, what the board should specify out of that 95 list, what the board wants to do.
Well, I mean, the other part of it too was, if there are other projects that the board would score differently, that might move a project up in ranking. We want to make sure that's part of the discussion as well.
Which, which posed the biggest threat to safety? The 95?
In, in combination with the other factors of the scoring.
So this was the, did you see that? The scoring mechanism they used? They gave points based on.
I think your question is, which is going to have the biggest impact on these flooding roads so that people don't get stuck in, in their cars?
Probably those two right there, right? That I'm looking at?
We got most of those, I believe, in that first column are, are ones that have an impact.
I'm thinking, well, based on this scoring mechanism you guys came up, these things all scored the same, correct? So they meet that, I mean, out of a total of 100 points. They're scoring 95, all four of those projects.
Are any of these grant eligible or bond eligible or?
Well, they're all bond eligible.
Yeah, yeah, I know. But well, when I say bond eligible, we have not, this is separate from the last bond.
Without question, yes. This would be in addition to, but.
And are these 30-year, so if you did a 30-year bond, what's the lifespan of these projects? 10 years or is it, is it parallel with the?
Well, we would, we would not finance a project longer than what the life of the project is. And in all of these cases, if there's infrastructure involved, it's, it's beyond 30. It's probably closer to 50.
So you could float it, not, not that you want to, but maybe we should if it's floating on the bond.
Well, but so that's fine. So let's talk about what we have, though. We have about 2 million in the stormwater budget, plus a million coming in. So out of that nine, we could really fund three, couldn't we, today?
You have other projects, right?
Right, there's about somewhere, it's a rough number, you're real rough, just big picture.
Yes. Yeah, my hesitation is that, um, there's, there's a number of number of designs, number of projects in design where we've already obligated some of that 2 million. So I wouldn't want to double count that. Even though it's cash in the bank right now, we're sitting there and it looks like it's there and available. We've, we've let projects and we have purchase orders against it. So.
But with, with the timing of two, one to two years, we probably can absorb any of that anyway, right?
The South Wayne project, I believe, is ready to, almost ready to go, so there's a commitment on that.
So, yeah, so we might be able to do one of those with cash.
Right, so that's what my point is. Out of those, so Bob is just saying the South Wayne project. So can you go back to the South Wayne project there? South Wayne project.
Is that the one, that's the one in the parking lot?
What does that, what does that mean?
Pretty close to the firehouse.
That's to impact the flooding there in front of the firehouse and the pit school administration building.
And so what's the scope of that work is my question. Repay, re, digging up the parking lot, putting in stormwater in there?
Correct.
And it'll, it'll be infiltration under the parking lot?
Actually be storage underneath there. And a way to be able to. Actually be storage underneath there, and a way to be able to move that water over South, South Wayne Avenue into that storm system that's underground there.
That's underground that goes under the middle school or that goes into the, into that, into the?
Into the field, into the big field.
And it, because there's that underground thing that's there too, right?
Hopefully, the intent is to reduce the amount of flooding that goes into the school district, to the loading dock areas, as well as allowing the fire department to be able to get out.
And that will alleviate the flooding in front of the fire trucks and that, and that South Wayne Ave area that's been flooded?
Will greatly improve. It's not, it's still looking good because we, we don't have enough area to dig, to store that.
So, why don't we designate as the one that we just talked about?
What say you?
Yeah, I mean, if we're talking about areas of need, I think that's an area of need.
And, yeah, and we scored it the same way administratively. It's, we identified that as one of the high priorities.
I think North Wayne is an area that has to be addressed because during those storms, you pretty much block neighborhoods. Once you go underneath the subtracts, you block that area.
Yeah, one of the other issues, like, I don't mean to take away from this. I recognize it took effort and I think it is an important tool. But this seems to be sort of an abstract ranking without really respect to where the projects are in terms of their development. So, for instance, the tree trenches, I imagine as we get grant funds in for those projects in particular, those funds have been earmarked. That's a project that would get done quicker. There are also much smaller projects that you can bang out faster. They will be done before either the South Wayne or the Gulf Creek flood projects get done, even those, even though those two have higher priorities. Similarly, Gulf Creek may be really, really high priority. We will continue working on that. But that's a project where you need individual residents to buy in. We have this pre-step of getting everybody to accept the township proposal before we can even start really working on the bidding process or the approval process. Whereas South Wayne, it's a smaller number of people. You can get started on that sooner rather than later.
Well, don't forget about Maylin Road, which is, and the road's about to collapse.
Well, in that, that area, Maylin Road is one that is, now we're seeing new flood in that area, which I'm not sure what has created that. So, that is a, another area that your, your band becomes and you can't traverse the, traverse the area. So, you've got, you've got all over, and I think that's one of the things we want to discuss with the board, is how do you want these, you know, set? Do you want to address areas of each particular ward of greatest need or do we take the greatest need with the township? And I think that's all that discussion it has to go to because I don't think there was any, ever any intention of this fund, this stormwater fund would pay directly for projects because based on that number, we'd never do a project because you'd never have enough cash. The intention was, you were going to borrow for this, it was enough that that fee was going to pay what that debt services. That was the intent of that, that fund because you knew you had just millions and millions of dollars of projects. And unfortunately, it's sitting now on your lap because you're in the 70s looking at projects that cost a million dollars, which now that million-dollar project is no longer, no longer there.
So, what do you need from us with regards to this? Do you want us to identify projects? You want us to?
Our hope would be that this would be one of those meetings that you would call into January and February to say, okay, it was ranked. So, that you specifically spend that time, this is the discussion. Have everybody here who's consultants, everybody at that meeting decide how we want to go. But I think like Bill had said, even if the board says we're going to pick these five projects, you'll never construct them until that first year. They're going to have all that design somewhere ready to go because we've already paid those expenses, so there are some. Maylin Road, Culver, that one's going to be the biggest priority because that's going to collapse any big. You've got South Wayne lot, those, with those items that you have.
So, was that cost design?
Maylin Road is actually under, under design, I believe, from that Culver.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just asking, do we, is that, did you account for, I mean, I mean, I think it already has kind of played out on its own. I mean, those, the projects that we've already put time and money into when it comes to the development and design of the project seem to have all risen to the top.
Correct. And you've got West Wayne Preserve is one that's going to grab, hopefully reduce flooding off of Lancaster, Afrin, South Devon. Because it all comes down that way.
I think it's important to identify what the will of the board is on these projects tonight so that we can, it facilitates the budget process.
Well, with regard to the, the stormwater fund, we can, we're not in the same box that we are with, say, the general fund in establishing the millage rates. We've got some, a little bit more flexibility.
Well, we do, but to me, I want to keep powder dry or debt capacity available for the higher priority, which is a sanitary sewer system. And we have a funding debt mechanism for this, for these projects, so you may as well use it. We, we, what we don't, what we have is a big unknown and a large known expense coming up for the sanitary sewer system. And so, it seems to me to keep, to keep available debt capacity for that element. Even though for 2020, it looks like we'll, we'll be able to evaluate, you know, borrowing unforeseen's. But especially because we have some projects that have been designed here and we have, there is money available. There's money coming in and there's money sitting.
I thought we were setting up for the discussion about the sewers to, the first discussion is, do we keep them or do we sell them? I mean, I thought that was going to be the first discussion. That was what we were working towards. Gathering the information to understand that.
Goes to the sewer authority. I mean, it's against the sewer fees, not against general fund.
No, it's been, those have been all GOs.
Yeah, and can we, can we focus on the stormwater first? Everything else?
Yeah.
So, so, so on these projects, like West, West Wayne, we won't be able to do construction in 2020. That's probably sliding to 2021. So, can you parcel out and separate? So, you're not going to need?
We can.
You're not going to need 2.3 in 2020, but you can keep moving it forward.
Yeah. We can.
And that way, Rich, maybe, I think this gets to your point, maybe you can focus on more than one project in 2020 and just keep pushing, keep moving maybe a top of three or four projects forward. And a sort of a phased approach.
So, we're going to borrow, would we borrow all the money that we need? Borrow the money that we need for the?
If you decide to go that route.
Only, only up to three years, though.
But I think Rich was saying.
I was saying.
We have got the money now. Now I see these projects and.
Definitely.
I think.
Sounds like it's ready to go.
I wouldn't recommend borrowing those forwards like this next year because those aren't going to be constructable. And we don't want to get in boxes and say, borrow, say $2 million for this project. And all of a sudden, price comes in at 3.5. Now, all of a sudden, okay, you're scrambling for, where's that 1.5 at? Is cover those expenses for engineering, get ready to bid, and then if the board says, these four projects, we're moving now, let's go. We should be able to have them try to come in around that same time so you know exactly what you're going to have to borrow.
So, borrow the money once the bid comes in.
Because then you know what your costs are going to, what your strong firm costs are because.
So, then you're suggesting borrowing project by project?
No, you would try to block a number of these projects. Because we've got a number of them coming now that we know we're ready to bid on. You would take those and say, can we afford those with cash or should we borrow for these?
So, we could do that with these four that are in this first.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Bob, would that be done as a bond, a bond or a line of credit? Because we would want to be sitting on some of this money. Would we be able to get to those four projects right away or would there be some labor issues where we're sitting on money paying interest? Waiting, you know, paying, waiting for these projects to get done?
If we're not, if we're not issuing the bonds until we're actually going out to bid, we could, we could bond it immediately because we won't sit on that cash long. Because as soon as we get the bids back and award contracts, they're going to be in the ground and we're going to be spending that money immediately. It's not like, I mean, the alternative would be, and this is what Bob is suggesting we don't do, is borrow it all upfront, design it. The design takes a year, so we're sitting on that money for a year. And then we're bidding it and, yeah, then.
And then it could come in.
Sure. So, just another quick question. Depending on, what is it, 8 million for, or how much would we be looking at? 10 million?
It was 9 million.
9 million?
So, it's 95%.
It was 9, yeah, 9.5.
What do you think that would do to our, our credit? I mean, where are we credit-wise? What would that do to our rating? Can we absorb it? Are we going to pay higher fees or interest rates because we have issued two bonds in two years?
So, my opinion of that, on that answer is that if, if the stormwater fee is adjusted to pay for the debt, it'll have no impact on our credit rating.
I, I agree with that.
And the reason, and this circles back to not just sanitary, but also stormwater. It'll, in almost, in almost any scenario, it's always going to be backed by the township's GO. I mean, we'll, we'll pay for it with the various fees. But our credit, our general obligation credit, the backing of the township itself is always going to be a better credit rating, which is going to always give us a better price.
So, it would be a GO bond, not a resident bond?
Exactly.
But maybe from what I've heard, just to confirm, we will be doing projects next year. So, we will have projects ready to come to and say, we're like, we're ready to go. Which at that time, we should, we'll be able to determine what those costs are going to be. So, you're going to have different variance rounds that you're going to have at those each year. Because you're going to want to start getting projects done.
Can, Bob, can you go through those four 95 ranked, 95 percentage or score projects, just briefly, the scope of each one of them?
If I, if it would be all right, I can have Steve go through all those. Steve was very much involved with all the different perspectives. I don't want to just give a quick thumbnail sketch of what you've got.
What's the North Wayne one?
That's, that's Jack's, the project where they're going to go and widen the.
Streambank.
The stream.
So, you're saying that that's got to get all the agreements with the 180 or whatever those people are?
That's correct.
So, that, so what's the, the other two? We did, we did South Wayne?
Talked about South Wayne.
We did that one.
West Wayne?
Is that converting the low area there to a basin?
And the West Wayne Preserve?
That's the West Wayne Preserve. Yeah, that's what it is.
It's a basin.
And then what's the other one?
And then Maylin is the infrastructure piece.
That's the rocks alongside the road?
No, that's actual.
Under the road.
Culver.
It's, um, it's a, it's a Brummar Avenue.
It's ours, yeah. It's ours. You'd never go over there.
The, the stream.
Oh, I know where that is.
Some of mine are the woods.
I know, are streams that run over any road, or under any road.
I think Brummar, that were three.
Yeah, before, before you cross Brummar, I think it's a big.
Yeah, all the houses and bridges.
And where's the Worcester Road one? It didn't get a 95 score. Wait, there it is. It only got 65.
And these go back to, I think what Jack was talking about, the discussion with board. Are there ones that you say, you know, we want to try to incorporate this one? Try to do that, or you take the ones that were major issues?
One of the other thing, and this is, I don't know if I'm helping the conversation or hurting it, but when we were, when Steve and I were working on getting this organized, we were talking about the $29 fee.
$29 per quart rate, what do you mean?
The fee of $29, it's applied differently depending on your property, whether it's residential or other developed. It's currently set by the Board of Commissioners at $29 and it generates about 1.1 billion a year. And what we were thinking of is that we could take that and by policy, break it out into different groupings. So, to Commissioner Larkin's point that he made earlier, we could carve out some of that annual revenue to address what we're not seeing on this, that are some of the, the cheaper, low-scoring projects. Some of that could get done every year out of that on a cash basis. We could take a certain amount of that and dedicate it towards the design and pay cash for the design of the larger projects. And then, in, when we plan for that, we do so so that the design of all of the grouping that we're doing comes together at the same time and then we could bid and roll out a grouping of projects.
And bond those other projects.
And then bond the, the actual infrastructure installation. And then keeping a certain amount of the fund available for emergencies. So, the culverts that, you know, we get a phone call for and they say that, you know, the wing wall's cracked and we got to get out there and fix it. Or we have a big storm like we did on, was it South Devon, where debris struck it and it made it an immediate project that needed to be addressed. So, having a little bit of cash every year for that would be beneficial too. So, I mean, that's something we can get into a lot more detail at a, at a meeting where we're focused only on that. But it's, I think it's a way to take the $29 and use that to help start, you know, kind of focusing in on what we can do to some of these projects.
Presumably, the bonded piece, you'd raise the 29 to cover the bonded piece.
That's, that's really the only way. I mean, that's, that, that, yeah, I mean, that's the only way you can do it and have the stormwater fund pay for it. The alternative is.
You can just say yes, Bill.
Have the general, well, I'm, I'm providing you options. That's an option. Another option would be to have the general fund pay for it. That probably would over time hurt our credit rating if there's not dedicated revenue to fund it.
The 95 stuff, that's, they're, it's all been designed, okay, for the design?
It's in various stages of design. Engineers are working on it right now.
So, you can get to.
That's my understanding. I don't know the exact timeframe on when we'll have something to bid with.
Well, at least three of them are designed.
Completed?
Yeah.
All right, so those.
I think the only one we haven't really seen is we have not seen the South Wayne one at all yet. The other ones, we voted on some aspects.
So, so South Wayne, we have to bid the design and then wait for them to design it and come up with a fresh estimate?
And my understanding is that it's already in design.
Okay.
South Wayne, it's just not done.
Okay. So, we have to wait for that design to be completed and then get a fresh estimate.
So, this will wait for one of the meetings, January, February? Because we don't need to decide on stormwater fee at this point yet.
And at this point, there's no need to consider adjusting the fee because there's, there's no projects or debt associated with it to adjust it for.
What would people do for parking in that South Wayne when this is all going on?
Maybe we can work a deal with the school district.
Uber.
Maybe we can work a deal with the school district on like weekends or evenings or something.
It's usually not that full.
Yeah, while the library is under construction.
Yeah.
It was out for two years then as well.
There's a lot of old turnoffs in that area.
Well, I would say press on with, I mean, and do that, spend the money that's in the fund. I, I think people are very irked that we have this money sitting there. We collected for four years. It's, you know, it's not being used to reduce stormwater.
There's a lot of projects we've done.
It is being used.
And my, and my recollection is different, Bob. I, I thought the money, when we, when the stormwater, the stormwater fee, the rain tax was implemented by the board prior to me joining the board, if you recall. But again, I followed that pretty close and I thought it was to, to pay for projects, but it doesn't matter. It's the same thing. Either paying for projects or paying for debt service. And also, it was higher when it was approved.
Well, that's, that, I think that's where the confusion is. When it was initially proposed by the, by AMAC, the firm that we hired to do the study, it was twice as high. And the other $29 would have been used to pay for those projects, but it was halved. And we took some of that $8 million settlement and put it into stormwater to help get the fund up and running and.
The discussion always included bond.
Tell Jenny Brown to get another settlement.
Well, I don't know, Commissioner.
But, but Rich, Rich.
I've received some critical input from one of the commissioners about. I've received some, uh, critical input from one of the commissioners about.
I, I, you know, it's, I'm just trying to help you with your budget problem. You know, I wouldn't recommend it as a policy matter, but.
Rich, to your, to your point, I, I mean, I foresee at least three projects coming before the board next year. It's a, you know, where construction will begin shortly after.
Yep. So, yeah, you ought to figure on, figure on that. But I guess the bottom line is it still remains to be seen. They have to be designed, and then a new estimate has to be, and maybe you'll change your mind when that comes out.
Alright, so do you think you have any, what you need from us in order to prepare what you need to prepare for the next meeting?
Yeah, so the only things that, I mean, we didn't touch on the general capital.
Before we leave this, let's just slide that Worcester Road one. I, I highly recommend that, that's, I'm an advocate for that.
The Stormwater projects, are problems over there, or?
No, there's not, but that, that's, that's one. That's one, remember, we contribute the most in second.
Yeah, so the general capital, and, and I, and I, going back to how we started the meeting is, uh, I think until we have the village discussion buttoned up, it's hard to really talk about general capital, cause there is no funding for it.
Well, paving, paving roads is, we have our pay-as-you-go.
But even that, even the township's portion of that, over and above the liquid fuels, uh, needs to be funded. We have to add that.
You have one point two million surplus.
Well, so what I was gonna suggest is that, uh, and this is, boards in past years have done this. When we had, uh, unexpected business taxes and unexpected surpluses, is that was usually what the board elected to do with those surpluses, is use that to fund the general capital projects for the following year. The, the, the way that works is that we conclude the audit and button up the financial statements, which is usually in May. Then we'll have a hard number, um, that we could transfer from the general fund to capital, uh, and then proceed with, uh, funding some of those projects. So if the, if the board's in agreement with that, um, maybe what we can do is identify, you know, up to a million dollars for general capital, of what you would like to see done. And, um, we can at least pencil those in until, uh, the number becomes final.
What sheet would that?
That would have been the green capital sheet in the distribution from last month.
Well, I'd have put it down in a seven point two five estimate for twenty-twenty.
But that, you, even doing that, you'd still have from the liquid, you'd still have from tax revenue enough to do the regular road resurfacing.
So you've got one seventy in here for road resurfacing?
Uh, yes, so that, that one seventy brings us from.
Two point, one point two to, to one?
Well, from the eight hundred tw- or eight hundred thirty thousand that we're gonna get from liquid fuels plus.
To the million.
To get us up to a million.
Right.
And keep in mind that as part of this seven million dollars we borrowed earlier in nineteen, there's four hundred thousand of that that the board wanted added to the road program. So next year, twenty-twenty, will include, it'll be one point four million.
And we did two million in twenty-nineteen anyway, because we had a year catch-up.
Yeah, only cause we didn't do any year.
Yeah. And still, and still King of Pressure Road is horrible, you know, by Villanova Center. That's, Pendot, Pendot's gotta get that, right? Yep.
We can't resurface that. And that's, you know, you, you hear the resonance and the frustration.
King of Pressure Road, I was gonna call nine-one on that, it's so bad. Alright, so this is.
You may have to charge your fees.
So this is the, uh.
So this is the list of projects, I'm not sure if you guys wanna get into this tonight, but maybe a more efficient use of the time is.
What's the high priority out of this?
Take a look at this list ahead of Monday night, and if we, depending on where we land with the village, if that million dollars that we're anticipating ending twenty-nineteen with is still available, that could be used to address some of these projects.
Can you scroll up?
I am at the top.
Scroll down.
Oh, scroll down. There we go, this is, I, does this look more in the.
Version, I apologize. Play with, play with the formatting, so.
Yeah, it looks like we don't need any of those.
Yeah, so, I'm just, I'm, I'm confused. So on top of giving the library money, we're also gonna give them an additional ninety-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars to fix their.
Patio, point base and reassignment.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, so on top of it, on top of what we give them, they want more.
Uh, the, the one primary difference, not that I'm advocating, is that we actually own that facility.
Yeah, that's, that's a township building.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the library occupies it, it's a township asset.
No, that's Kreuzberg, we have different contractual obligations.
Kreuzberg, Kreuzberg is in there.
Yeah, their, their request for the repointing is in here as well.
So do you have a recommendation on how we go about prioritizing?
Can you scroll down slowly again, so we can look at some of the other ones that might jump out as important?
You know, Sulpicio Gym?
Give that back to the school board and take over.
There's Askin Road right there.
We can, um, ahead of Monday night, we can come up with.
Like some that are, you know, are obligations?
Where, where's our traffic adaptive system?
That's part of the borrowing we did earlier this year, so.
Alright, so that's all paid?
Can you keep going?
Yeah, it's not on this list.
Okay, good.
Highlight the fifth ward project.
Yeah, I think fourth and fifth ward should get some projects, since there were no fourth and fifth ward projects in the bonds.
Veterans Park, Veterans Park should be on there, because supposedly that's all paid.
Yeah, you can take that off, right?
Hey, Bill, why, why do we have, why is Warren Philpon up there? What are we doing, Paul?
That's, that's the regrading and redoing the.
That's the, yeah, the actual turf redo on that.
What's the trail, what's the trail stuff?
It's got two hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Look at that, it's two million in trails, why, why is that? That's Radnor taxpayer money.
Lots of people in the township think trails are worth investing in.
Yeah, they, they're pretty. So, yeah, I mean, the big one.
And a lot of them were in the bond issue.
Yeah, right, there's a lot, there's a lot of grants, there's a lot in the bond issue, but a lot of trails are paid for by regional or state money.
So the Radnor Trail one, that, the seven hundred ninety is for the, you know, just doing the, uh, the stone uputments on both sides of the trail. Uh, just redoing that. Uh, so that's not part of any prior bond money. We would actually probably have a hard time granting that, since it's just restoring something that already exists. Uh, the Radnor Trail extension.
Is that necessary to give in two thousand twenty?
No, uh, yeah, and, and because none of this is funded, it's kinda hard to, to find a year that it fits. I mean, it's a little, um, it's difficult, so the default is the current year.
Yeah, the, the work, Yankee Trail head is not gonna be next year, but I think it's three or four years out.
So those two, we can push to twenty-one or twenty-two?
Without any question, yeah.
What's the, what's the Sawmill Road parking lot?
That was the one for, uh, redoing the parking area in that area.
I would say I want to do that.
Yeah, I, I don't know the area.
Um, we still have work that has to be done to make actual where people park off the side, actually straighten out those areas. That number may not be as high, but we still need to redo the parking that currently exists within that area.
Is the crosswalk in here, or is the crosswalk?
Crosswalk being done. But the parking areas need to be readjusted within that area.
Bill, Bill, so we're looking at ten percent increase in our sewer fees. Seven million in like ninety-five for, in the major stormwater issues. And then, not that we're gonna fund all this capital, but to say six million in twenty-twenty capital. So that would be just, um, so we're a million ahead. We have a million dollar surplus now, quote unquote. And then that's without the million that we put in fire as well. So we're looking at.
Or the library, or any of those other things.
Oh, oh, and then we have to do the OAS for library.
It was two, it was two point four without the library and the fire department.
So we're looking at like fifteen million in stuff that we would.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, but, and this is without, but OPEB is paid for.
Yep.
OPEB is included in this, yeah. But just to be clear, there's, there is enough revenue that, for twenty-twenty, to include one point two million dollars. That's, that's currently not in this expense number. So the way we presented it, and I know it's causing some confusion now, the way we presented it is that we would fill this one point two million up by putting back in the contributions to the library and these other organizations. So they would be funded with today's current tax dollars, today's revenues, as they have been in years past. Um, the only adjustment beyond that would, would be for fire. And no, and no capital.
And, and all those green projects?
Well, and we could, if, if this net revenue number from twenty-nineteen materializes, we could apply that million dollars to the green project, to a million of the, a million dollars worth of that green project list, yes.
Listen, that, that capital list in the green sheet needs a finer review with a, with a comb, fine-toothed comb to.
No doubt.
Put it in, put it in the right years.
Yep, no doubt about it. And there's probably some projects on there that were there from two years ago that may not make sense now. There's a, there's a big WBOD redo, uh, with the, the work we did this year, maybe that's, we don't even need that on the listing. I don't, like, so it does require a, an in-depth review.
And a lot of these projects are bond look, really bond eligible, so.
Almost, almost everything on that list would be bond eligible.
Sure. I mean, but then, so we're looking at funding the, the day-to-day out.
Well, it's also to look at some of these, and if you go through it again and look at what can be eliminated or, you know, what, and push some things out or plan out, can we also use this as a guide for, you know, going out to seek additional grants or, you know, funding for the next, you know, if we wanna do a project, start looking at that now. So what was that one, the grant we wanted to try to get for, um?
For what?
No, no, for the, the gateway from, with Villanova, what was that? That was a, um.
It was a RACP, RACP.
RACP grant. So things like that, you know, if we were gonna do some of these projects, do we try to plan and get some funding at this point? You know, look at that now, knowing that we could help offset some of the costs and do them later.
Was that one, I think we can send it right now to our reps and make sure it gets within the submitted list that they have. Let's have your money come to us next year. But your next is talking about that.
I'm just, I use that as an example.
I, I would focus more on the projects where we have a lot more visibility right now. And something like that, I'd push off. And there's also the trust and other, under, other funding for that, but I mean.
I thought the trust was giving us the last of their money.
They were giving us the last of their money, uh, and what had to be used in the gateway, so we are looking to use that to clear all the lead trees and all that scrap out of that middle area.
Yeah.
And then hopefully pitch it to a number of the organizations and see if they'll participate with us on that. And then go for state funding, but also, there are other items I think we could engage the state on assistance here.
And plus, there's WBOD money in there. It's, that was on the sheet, it was twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
To be spent from the township, not from those trust funds.
Yeah, not from that, not from that, but, but there's that gateway money that we're talking about, is what I'm saying.
All those from the trust will all be done after this year. So I think there was three thousand left, now it's gonna be used towards the clock that's in there to continue to keep maintaining that, so it doesn't fall, this will bear with until last time.
Um, and now, and now Bill's one.
I, I would urge the board also to consider the, um, OPEB funding, maybe this is a perfect year to, uh, to go to zero.
No.
Like we considered last year.
Is there a way we can build in the money for the, um, the forty thousand or the thirty, whatever, for the, um, uh, ready one hundred, ready for one hundred?
Yeah, like.
Oh, no. We don't have any money for that. There's no payback for that.
Oh, there's, there's, there is.
Okay, okay, okay.
Excuse me.
Let's, let's.
We're three million short. We're three million short. We're over three million short. Yeah, we're fifty, as Sean just points out, we're fifteen million short for this year.
Well, then, thirty-eight thousand is a chunk.
Rounding error. Rounding error. Overcome.
One other item we could get clarity on, if we could talk about the community group funding?
The what?
The community group funding? This, this is how you want to stay for two thousand twenty, do you want to reduce it in the areas, or?
Can, can we do something like California did and, and have this be a, a direct five oh one C three contribution by the taxpayers? In other words, we should not collect this money in taxes and then give it as a charitable contribution on, on the taxpayers' behalf. We should let them fund it directly. All except the library, I guess.
Well, I look at what functions are up here that typically you'd see governments providing rather than private organizations? And that's really just the library and senior center. So I could see cutting the rest fifty percent and tell them we're weaning them off for the next two years, just zero them out.
I would keep the historical society, because they don't ask for much and they, they are an integral part to Radnor.
And they, they generate anything for us.
But Rich, where do you draw the line, cause then you got the women's resource.
I draw the line right there at historical society.
Yeah.
How much do they ask?
Because the historical society is part of the culture and heritage of, of Radnor. I, I think that that has value.
And we never gave them any money to them back three years ago, right, Bill? When they were doing the building renovations. We did, we never gave them money.
We started funding them four or five years ago.
It was a fund.
Yeah, that's, yeah, maybe three or four.
We have a hard, you know, I, I think the historical society is worth something, so.
I, I think it's worth something too, I would cut that number in half. They asked us to buy them a new covered wagon. Like unless you can fight fires with the covered wagon, we, we can't afford that right now. I know it's not a big expense, but we're gonna be raising taxes this year. It sounds a whole lot like buying a Radnor attached covered wagon, this is not the time.
Well, it was the same wagon, they're gonna rebuild it.
That's, doesn't make me feel.
It's not a new wagon.
It was, if we add this back in, then we zero out, right?
Yes.
Or, or could we, if anybody who contributes to that, we can give them a tax credit?
Don't they already get that?
How much was that?
No, 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 not only that, it's ten thousand.
It would be a dollar-for-dollar credit. So if somebody donated a thousand dollars to the historical society, they could get a thousand dollar credit up against their taxes.
Encouragement of credits is limited by statute.
That's what California does.
I would, I'm along the lines there about what John mentioned, and then I would go one step farther and peg the library and senior center somehow to our revenue stream this year. So it's not always going up.
With the ceiling.
Yeah. So what was that, Jake, I can't, I can't hear what Jake's idea was.
That's what, I think you proposed that last time.
Like, we, we talked about that.
Yeah. It, it could be drag, Act five eleven, I mean, that could drop by ten, fifteen, twenty percent a year. So if we're willing to do that to library and senior center, then.
I don't know if that, I don't know if that's going to be a project for the next week or so. My own instinct would be that we freeze funding for everyone at twenty-nineteen level. My own instinct would be that we freeze funding for everyone at 2019 levels. I would like to not pay for the covered wagon, as I said, but I, I recognize that the library is asking for the additional funding. They did not say that they needed it in order to keep the doors open. It sounded like it was in the nature of their additional programs that they'd like to work on. Ditto the senior center. Um, I'd just, I'd save the $30,000, $35,000. Those $40,000, when you take out the line.
Oh, there's money for Ready for 100.
So, so, I mean, we had these, we had these same conversations last year about funding community groups. And, you know, we're, we're back at the same place. So, what's the goal for next year?
Well, we increased funding last year.
We did, but, I mean, we talked about, you know, duplications in services, Suri Services, Senior Center, um, the library. But we're back at funding, um, we're funding Suri Services that they're, will ask.
I, I'd like to freeze everything this year and then start a downward trend next year.
Well, and then we also have the discussion of pulling out, you know, library and senior center. Do we give them their own?
But why are we freezing stuff and then adding something? I mean, that's just, that's just, doesn't make any sense. We're adding.
We're not adding.
Yeah, no, we're adding.
No, we're adding.
If we freeze, you know, it would be.
No, we're still adding, you're still adding money to the bottom line with that. So, you either need to decide whether there's too much fat and decide what the fat is and cut it, or say, we're just gonna cherry pick what we want. Oh, and by the way, we can add another community group.
Ready for 100 is not a community group that provides ongoing services.
And this will be a one-shot deal.
I know, but we have our EAC that we still haven't even heard from on, on suggestions. That's where I thought we were gonna be getting feedback from first.
It's not a one-shot deal. It's, it's forever.
No, it's not.
It's on and on.
This is, this is the money for the consultant to provide, um, you know, the, the roadmap for what we want to do. Moving forward for the next 30 years.
So, I think Jack is being a little inconsistent because he trusts other organizations to give us our budget and just fund it. But these, he wants to freeze. Nonetheless, I will agree with Jack on freezing it, but if we're gonna freeze it, Sean's right. Freeze it and don't add anything. If you want to cut it and wean them off, as, as John says, then freeze it and cut, but don't add something else back. That's inconsistent.
Ready for 100, I think you're gonna realize some cost savings within there because there's already clear items that, again, that they've already done a lot of work, creating work with PICO.
Well, let's get that back.
That shows this, this building is not energy efficient. There's things that are on there that raise a lot of questions is, I mean, do we have people with mobile homes backing up and plugging in the building at night? Because it seems like the, the usage goes up at night, which seems inconsistent. Is that an issue with PICO? I think what they're looking to do is actually we'll, we will realize a cost saver, so an investment in something.
Well, well, let's get PICO to do that. Why would we pay a consultant $40,000 to do that? PICO will do that for free. And also get the, have the police on this. If there's people with their mobile homes. Somebody's bringing the RV and he's plugging in. Send the police out there.
That's a fire hazard.
To show the usage is not consistent. So, when you look at this globally and what we can do, I, I am confident that there's gonna be cost savings that are gonna be generated. And it's not where you have to continue to keep funding this. Or the improvements that are recommended, you take those savings, you reinvest it back into lighting and all these other different items that we have to.
You don't have to do everything that they say, but if it's supposed to affect the.
But it obviously is all gonna, they're all gonna bring back to you and work with you in partnership to say, here's what it is.
Well, I, I haven't seen anything from Ready, I mean, do you have cost savings that have been not only recommended and suggested, but implemented into other townships where you can actually see the bottom?
I have a lobby here. You have to have all changed out, so.
Well, we can put solar panels on the roof, but I don't necessarily know that we need, um...
Well, PICO has consultants that will give us all that.
Yeah, I think we should look at that, I should, I think we should look at that route though, if we want a consultant. See if we can find somebody that'll do it pro bono.
Or they, they get a, they get a cut. They work with PICO or whatever it is. How, how can we say we're gonna cut the senior center, the library, and then put it into an aspirational resolution?
I didn't say that. I said the others. I said them, but I didn't say cut. I said freeze.
Well, I think that's one of the suggestions this next year, those are one of those special meetings topics you're gonna discuss.
Well, as I said last year when we had this conversation, you know, if we're going to wean some of these groups off of township dollars, we need to let them know that. So, to let them know that now, um, I think is unfair. You know, I would be fine freezing it, but I would like to find the money for the Ready for 100.
Well, raise it at a fundraiser.
Well, we don't need to fund, we don't need to fund all 40 of it.
Well, why don't we cut the historical society and get that money for Ready for 100? There's 15,000. Oh, no.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that.
We, of course you would.
Ready for 100 is aspirational resolution. It wasn't supposed to cost $40,000.
You thought that it was aspirational.
It was, it was sold as aspirational.
It's not aspirational. It's a goal. It's something to work towards.
Well, nobody budgeted anything at the time. When, when you guys passed it, you didn't say, oh, this is gonna cost us $50,000 next year. But, but when you, we should have presented that when it was proposed for approval.
Would you have voted for it then?
No. But others, you might have affected others, though.
Should we get a direction on who wants to fund Ready for 100? Should we get a census on that? I'm willing, I'm willing to fund it. Lisa?
Oh, I'm willing to fund it.
All right, then, there we go.
Um, Bill, so Suri Services, they have like a $2 million budget. So if we don't give them $50,000, they'd probably be fine without us. Same thing with the Wayne Art Center. Their budget is what? Their revenues?
Nonprofits that run with such tight, um...
Well, we're a nonprofit that run with such tight.
You, you can't just pull $50,000 from them and expect, you know, expect that not to be...
Take $50,000 from people who are serving senior citizens or providing services to the township and hand it to a consultant.
They're just gonna have to raise taxes.
For an aspirational saving somewhere down the line.
Keep saying it.
So, freeze everything, let people know, and next year, the groups that we want to start reducing, start reducing them. So they can plan for it.
So, next year, if Ready for 100 needs more money, would we?
Well, obviously, they're all sitting here in the room. They're gonna see that it's not gonna be something that the commissioners are...
If there was additional money to actually implement the changes, then I'd be open to that. Although, parenthetically, hint, hint, I would also like to know what kind of grants are available for that. If that'd be valuable for us to know.
Part of what the consultant.
And that's part of what the consultant does.
If they just want an additional $40,000 because the consultant isn't done in the course of 365 calendar days in the year, then, wait, 366 calendar days is a leap year next year?
An extra day there.
Yeah, that should get him over the hurdle.
Sarah, can I ask, are you gonna be engaging with the EAC on this? I'm sorry to touch on the spot.
Candidly, the EAC has no interest. I'm finding the group. They're waiting for the state of Pennsylvania to decide whether they're going to allow a plastic bag van or not. And they've basically handed it to the Ready for 100 group. So, so let me just say that PICO did a pro bono analysis of this building. And they project, no, we don't know what the investment is to make the changes. But the, the energy bill for this building is $90,000 a year. They conservatively estimate that $30,000 would come off of that $90,000 figure.
And so the, will the consultant provide that kind of direction, like what we could do to make this building more energy efficient?
Exactly, and could help write an RFP. I've already talked to Bob. It would be a performance fund. So whatever the consultant managed to say for the first year, the only year, they'd get a percentage of that savings. A lot of it is turning off the lights. I came in, baseball or whatever it's called, they've got all their lights on. Those lights should go off when they leave. So, so.
You just said that they're gonna.
Rich, Rich, please let me finish.
I know, I thought you were finished, Eric.
I am not. I know you are opposed to all of this. But, there are possibilities in every building, including the library, to save energy dollars. That's the lowest fruit. Once the township has done this and has stood as a model, the residents will buy into it even more. Believe me. I've now got my energy, my electric bill down to $45 a month, and it wasn't very hard. So, the township is really serving as a model to what this township can do and what the residents can do. Part of, a, a piece of the consultant's business is stakeholder meetings, major stakeholders. And we, they gave us two, and we've actually asked for a possibility of four more. That's getting Penn Med on board, that's getting Brandywine on board, that's getting Radnor Corporate Center, it's whatever it is. And so, it's gonna take time and effort because it's not just the township and it's not just the residents. It's also the school district to get them on board. And it's, we need expertise. Part of their job is to tell us where the state is now and where the state isn't. So, there'll be some lobbying work, not paid by them, but by us, to say to our government, we want, we, we want this change. And the advantage in the Ready for 100 is already in southeast Pennsylvania. We have 24 municipalities. That's a big block.
Sarah, can you show me in writing where they said they could save this building $30,000? Can you have that?
I'll send you, I'll send you the data.
If you email me that and I see that, I would, I would, I would be gladly change my mind and be very, very interested. I don't think it's up to the township to knock on, maybe the school board, but not Penn Medicine or a, a private entity.
It's the consultant's job to find out what the basis is and then look for change.
But I don't, I, I don't want to pay us to be soliciting them to knock on doors of other institutions. We should just keep it strictly in the township buildings.
But if you're gonna get buy-in, you have to get the whole buy-in.
Well, they already went to the school district. The students did. The students went to the school district.
But that's not a private entity like, uh, Penn Medicine or...
And the school district is not buying in.
School district's not buying in.
Why not?
You're making a voice of yourself.
They, please let me finish.
Okay, we don't need to get to this school district.
I don't want to get to this district.
But you can, you can email me that.
I'll email it to you tonight.
Why would we be paying for a consultant to go to these other places and get these other people? Why is the township, why is it our budget?
Because it's a township-wide event. This is the whole community.
The school district's not involved. And also, Sarah, just want, maybe you can clarify for me, Commissioner Grouski, because she said that this consultant is going to ask for a percentage of the savings. So, we're gonna actually pay real dollars to them now.
No, I did not say that.
Okay, I thought I heard you say that.
No.
But, what, also, what we also found out, though, was we had, we already had free consulting from PICO and others that reduced the $30,000 savings, as well as Sarah didn't pay for a consultant to, to get her budget down. So, in other words, there's, there's already sources out there. And why would we pay for a consultant to solicit school districts and other businesses? Why is that in the township's budget when we have a $15 million shortfall this year?
The consultant will help us to identify whom we should include in terms of stakeholders. And I think it is really important to get stakeholders on, on a broad level and not just limit, uh, limited to the township itself. The township is a great place to start. I think it's, there are lots of areas where we can do a lot of savings. But I was here the night the resolution for Ready for 100 was passed. And, um, I know that, um, that there was an understanding that this wasn't just a, well, this is a resolution and it's, uh, it's aspirational and it's one and done. Because we were asked at that meeting, and Jack, I think it was you, who said, if we, if we approve this and people are asked to be on a task force, you need to step up and you need to be part of that task force. And that's why I stepped up. And I've been involved with it the whole way through. I think, you know, we do planning for every other thing. We, you know, we're gonna put in a curve, we get a planner to come and tell us how to do it. You know, we have a planner for sewer, we have a planner for everything. We want to do this in a very professional way, in a way that helps us to identify the big projects so that we can, um, so that we can show an impact right away. And so that we can save money for the township and for others, for constituents in the township, so that people will be interested in doing other things. And we, you know, we could do it ourselves, but with all due respect, we don't want to do a half-assed job. We really want to have professionals come in here to help us to do a very professional job and, uh, in the, in the best way possible. Thank you very much.
Nobody disagrees with that, but we have a $15 million shortfall and there's ways, that, there's no charge to get the benefit. So...
It's got stuff around it.
We're cutting, we're cutting senior services and then paying a consultant to solicit, to tell us who we should include.
We're not cutting anything.
Who, who are we gonna exclude from this?
So, Sarah, we're not cutting any senior services, Rich, so, um...
Next year, next year we're cutting it. Next year you're cutting it. We have these resolutions in future.
Are you making me feel guilty that I'm not giving the women's resources anyway?
No, we should give it. That was the last blank to fill in on this list.
I do feel kinda bad leaving that blank.
No, you should give them. That could save you a lot.
I would pitch, why don't we give them $1,000? It's not a significant dollar figure, but as we have learned, when we start giving money, they start showing up on our board every year.
But are we, are we moving towards weaning off everyone except for the seniors in the library?
I would not wean them down to zero. I think that some of these dollar figures are probably higher than what we can afford right now and higher than what is justified in the abstract for us to spend on the community groups that are outside of our core responsibilities. But I wouldn't wean, I mean, I wouldn't wean the art center down to zero. I wouldn't wean Suri Services down to zero. I just, I think $50,000 is a large ask for an organization that doesn't primarily serve Radnor Township. That's duplicative in a lot of ways of the senior center.
I would disagree that it is not duplicative of the senior center.
In some respects.
You disagree that it's not?
I would disagree that it is not duplicative of the senior center. What Suri Services offers, and I'm, I'm fine with freezing it. I'm fine with not giving them any more. Well, they didn't ask for any more. But it, it is very different. What Suri offers compared to the senior center is different. There are a few similarities, but they offer things that the senior center does not offer. And I will give you also, though, they do not serve a huge Radnor population, which, you know, is evident, I think, in those numbers. But they are not duplicative. It's absolutely not.
I think there's an overlap in the Venn diagram. That makes a difference.
So if it's, if it's, if it's transportation to appointments that they offer, couldn't we just contract it to Radnor residents?
It's not Radnor's responsibility.
That's not a business I think we want to get into.
If you want to fund Ready for 100, why don't you take Suri Services down to $12,000?
No, I'll take Historical Services Society down to nothing. How about that?
I disagree with that. I think, I think, I think you're gonna hear from your constituents, but...
So it's gonna be what, your way or my way?
But, but, but Suri Services, you just said, is not mostly Radnor. It's, it's not mostly Radnor. So if you want to pay for it, pay for it out of that.
Bill, so you would keep money for women's resor, you would give them?
That's the question.
I, I think that, I think that not...
I, I think that, I think that that's probably the most important. Five thousand that you should give because that five thousand, A, it's going to a much-needed cause. But on the selfish, selfish side, that could save us thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars, God forbid. We have another.
They do work with our police department, though.
Yeah.
He's talking about the service they provide.
Yeah, it keeps women safe and that's, that's important. At least from, unfortunately, you have to look at it on monetary value. And that's extremely important. So I think you should definitely keep that five thousand, if not give them more.
It's new money, it's not a keep. It's zero, that's the point.
You should give them at least five thousand.
And you're taking away from the senior center and the library.
To me, that's the most important. That's, that's where you should start.
I want them on the board, I don't care so much if it's one or five or fifteen or.
As long as they're on the board. Unfortunately, it could be too many to possibly.
All right, so I feel like I hear consensus around including the Women's Resource Center and the Ready for One Hundred.
Can we, again, can we take this out of the tax base or show it as a separate line item?
On the tax bills?
Yeah. I want to allocate that to every taxpayer.
So people can all, you can take it off their income tax.
We're making the assumption that only the real estate taxes are funding, not any of the other tax or revenues. None of the business taxes, none of the. Will it only be the business taxes, really?
I don't, I don't. It's not a matter of that, it's a matter of.
Also, it's just straight up.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're saying. Unless you want to portion it amongst those others.
All right, so I hear consensus with Ready for One Hundred. Do I, so I hear consensus to freeze, which really only impacts library, senior center, and art center. Add Resource Center and Ready for One Hundred.
All right, this is my consensus for that. Can you lower it, or Ready for, instead of giving thirty-eight, can you do it in two lumps of maybe ten thousand initially? And then if they need more, they can ask for it as opposed to just.
We still have to budget it.
Yeah.
If they don't use it, then we'll get it back.
Well, that number's based on a RFP that.
Sarah, you said, you said, Sarah. What's the first, what's the first set of money that you would need?
To sign the contract?
Yeah.
To guarantee them payment of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. They don't get it upfront, they bill as they complete portions of it, it's like five, five sections.
Is anybody going to look at this contract?
Well, the township has.
The township has looked at it, John Rice has looked at it.
John, John Rice has looked at it?
Yes.
It was a bid that, or an RFP that.
Why would John look at it? Because what, did we authorize John to look at that? We got billed for that.
He has a retainer.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, there's a dozen things he could be working on. We didn't, we didn't approve him to look at that, I guess.
They have more than enough on my box.
Can I get a copy, can I, can I see a copy of that contract?
You're going to miss this, Bill.
All right, so you guys are good, you have what you need to move forward?
I think it's probably a violation of church and state, separation of church and state. Ready for One Hundred. That's a religious.
Okay, we're going to get an motion to adjourn. Hold those in favor. Did I wait at it again a second?
You have a second, so.
No, you got to do public comment here.
We've had lots of public involvement.